Congratulations, Emma. That's a huge accomplishment. I will pause just for a second and make sure. I don't know if anyone has the ability to see if anyone on Zoom can hear us now?
It's good, Chris.
It's good? Okay, thank you. All right, thanks, Chris. Next recognition is for the Sitka volleyball team, but I don't think I see any of them or their coaches here, so I don't know if they got the word that they were going to be recognized tonight. So we will save that maybe for our next meeting. Okay. They did go up to the state tournament, I don't know, two to three weeks ago and represented Sitka for the 3A volleyball division there, and I got to go because I have two kiddos on the team. They did a great job, so. And the last recognition is for our Sitka high musicians. Andrew.
Good evening. As a person who greatly benefited from the music program in the school district, I was really excited to jump on this and honor and acknowledge our students who attended the All-State Music Festival that happened up in Anchorage. We had representatives in the band and the choir go from Sitka. And those experiences are just getting to sing or play your instrument with amazing musicians from all over the state can be life impacting when working with different directors. So congratulations to these students. For the All-State Band, Hannah Davila went for trombone, and Theo Everson for flute. And if any of you are here, please, please come up, and we'd love to clap for all of you. And Tyler Address for alto saxophone, who also got a first chair award, first state chair award, which is really impressive, thinking of all of the players around the state. And then for the choir, we had Izzy Williams, who went as an alto II. Quentin Newsom as soprano II. Mina Brooks Schmidt as soprano I. Gage Roseas as bass II. And then Dylan Dumag, my part, bass I. And Dylan got the first chair award as a bass I in the state as well. It's incredibly awesome. So congratulations to you all, and hope continue. Oh, and of course, Mr. Kearney, we'd love to recognize the work you do with our students. We have a certificate for you up here. Come up and be in the picture, Mr. Kearney. Here's your certificate, Mr. Kearney. Thank you, everybody.
Congratulations, you guys. All right, moving on to item seven, oh, sorry, it says eight, Persons to be Heard. Persons to be Heard is an opportunity for members of the public to speak to the board about a topic that is not on the agenda. As these are not agenda items, no board deliberation or action will occur in response. Questions for clarification may be posed by board members. The board may choose to refer items to the superintendent or designate for further action. The standard time limit for comments will be three minutes unless otherwise stated by the board president with consent of the board. A sound will indicate when time expires. All comments must be respectful, and charges or complaints against specific employees are not permitted. Members of the public are referred to Board Policies 1312, 1312.1, 1312.2, and 1312.3 and the associated administrative regulations, as well as to Board Bylaw 9323 for information on how to lodge complaints. Speakers are also asked to please state their full name for the record prior to speaking. Do we have any persons to be heard tonight? Just make sure you push the button and the red light will come on.
Good evening, school board members. My name is Cody Blumis. Some of you already have spoken with me. Some of you probably just heard about me. Don't believe all the hype you hear. I think you'll find me fair and firm but uncompromising when it comes to what I consider to be facts, you know, things like math, cost-benefit analysis, CDC statistics, that kind of thing. I actually want to start off by reading aloud a couple definitions out of the Merriam-Webster Dictionary. The first thing I want to define is quarantine, the situation of being kept away from others to prevent a disease from spreading, or a state of enforced isolation. The next thing I want to read the definition of is Munchausen Syndrome by Proxy, out of the Merriam-Webster Dictionary. It says, "A psychological disorder in which a caregiver induced the symptoms of a disease of their child falsifies the child's medical history or tampers with the child's diagnostic specimens in order to create a situation that typically requires medical attention. Synopsis would be a factitious disorder imposed on another." But moving right on, moments ago, before I came in here, I forwarded all of you guys an email that I sent to a very top-level Sitka school district administrator back in September, September 9th, actually. Don't worry, it's legal for you to look at it, and it's legal for me to send it. That's from before the school district started the correspondence with me that had classified notices on it, so we should be in the clear. Anyways, it's from a time when the Delta variant had just made headlines, and there was all kinds of hype in the media about how dangerous Delta was going to be. We all know how that turned out. And I suggest that if you can, you open that email and you read it before you enter executive session tonight. If you can't, hopefully what's in that email won't impact your decision too much if you can't get to reading it before Agenda Item 15, which is quote, "Executive session to discuss superintendent evaluation, quarterly check-in, and contract negotiation," end quote. Well, that sounds important. Unfortunate that you don't have more time to consider the correspondence that I'm referring to. By the way, Paul, it's great talking with you at length a couple weeks ago. I really appreciate that conversation. So, oh, and I'd like to also to pass along an invitation that I happened to hear today to Mrs. Morrison and Mr. Hauser. I was on Problem Corner last Tuesday. Amy, you called in, you remember, right? Anyway, I was invited back next Tuesday, and when I was listening to Problem Corner today, the host said that they reached out to you guys and invited you to join me next Tuesday on Problem Corner. So I think that'd be kind of fun. Just like I said, I just learned about this today, and I figured it would be fun for us to talk about that email, how it relates to the current situation that we were in regarding Omicron, considering that email that I'm talking about is from the time when Delta was just coming out, and how it relates to the newspaper articles today where school officials were quoted about the mitigation measures moving forward. I just think that'd be kind of relevant. So like I said, I've afforded that to you guys, I've forwarded it to the entirety of the Kids First Sitka audience behind me, so they have it, and they can share it in the audience, so I'm sure you'll find the responses interesting. And so anyways, I'm also going to forward that to the radio station and to Problem Corner, so they can read that email at the beginning of the program on Tuesday. So whether you guys show up or not, that's what we'll be discussing. So anyway, thank you for your time. It's three minutes.
Thank you. Is there any other persons to be heard tonight? Yeah, come on up. Yep.
Thank you. Jason Anderson. Thank you for the time this evening. I'm here to put on the record my feelings towards the COVID mitigations within our district. I graduated from the Sitka School District in '02. I believe you're all here with the best of intentions, but I need you all to do better. Our children's education and our futures are on the line in our society as a whole. At first with COVID, we were most all on the same page. We had no idea what this COVID business was about. Now, with little energy put into finding numbers off the CDC's page, other government pages, and countless scientific journals, it's very easy to tell that we are far from a state of emergency. These mitigations were understandable when we were all in panic with no answers, but now there are answers, and the numbers tell us there is little to no risk for children and a majority of the adults. So why the mitigation? I'll answer for you since we can't have this discussion. It's dollars and quite a few dollars. All you have to do is fall in line and don't ask questions. Well, I'll let you know right now, that doesn't work for me. Our children's education is at stake, and what's your plan moving forward for the children who are a year behind and struggling because of remote learning and little school last year? You all have different, you have all different levels of learners in the district. Thanks to no child left behind, you don't have to have a plan, do you? You all have plans on how to appease a couple race-baiting squeaky whales in this town, but what are your plans for our education as a collective? Our future is at stake, and it starts here at the schools with our most vulnerable. Have any of you done research on the negative effects of some of these mitigations? Please protect our children and do what is right. End this madness, or keep it for those who are ill-informed, but make these mitigations optional. Most of what you're enforcing is unconstitutional, and you could be held liable. We just want our parental rights back within our district. In closing, we spend more per student than most other countries, and our testing scores are at the bottom of the list. Obviously, it's been tried and tested, and these COVID dollars you're scared of losing? They're not going to improve our children's education. Something more needs to be done. I ask you to focus on the more, not the PC more, but the fundamentals more. The teachers want to teach, not police. Let them have their classrooms back, and let the children have their smiles back. Follow the science. Thank you for your time.
I will ask that there, I will ask that there not be any applause. This is a public meeting, and that's not the appropriate thing to do, so thank you. Are there any other persons to be heard?
Good evening, board members. My name is Greg Dunn. I have three kids in this, in the school district right now. One doesn't have to wear a mask because she can't, but my other two come home every day complaining of headaches. They complain that, oh, sorry. They, I talk better off without a mic. But they, they come home every day complaining of headaches, they go right and take a nap because they've been in this mask all day. They don't get mask breaks anymore because we've given so much power to a public health nurse and others in this community that the teachers have to police everything they're doing all day long. It's absolutely asinine to me. I try to explain to them every day why they need to go to school so they can keep improving, but I have to give them mask breaks about once a week, and some days I can't send them to school because they have sniffles or something, or they have sore throats from wearing a mask all day. They're running around in PE with masks on, they're doing everything with these masks on. When, all the mitigations tell us that the best thing to do is wash your hands just like if it was flu season. And we all know this, we all seen the science, we've all followed everything, whether you believe it or not. We need to do better for our kids. We need to do better for our teachers. We need to let them teach, have, you know, be teachers again and not police. That's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other persons to be heard?
I'm Brett Wilcox. I'm the author of Jabbed: How the Vaccine Industry, Medical Establishment, and Governments Ticket to You and Your Family. This is what we're teaching our children. We're teaching our children that when adults are afraid, the Constitution is null and void, that bullying is bad except when it's government-sponsored and culturally sanctioned, that hate speech is bad except when targeting the people the government trains us to hate, that free speech is outdated and dangerous, that many of the people who once protested segregation, discrimination, and tyranny are now petty tyrants who celebrate segregation and discrimination, that the predator class has replaced religion with a filthy mix of corruption, politics, ideology, and idolatry, which they market as science, that public health is the state-mandated religion, that non-vaccine vaccines are the compulsory sacrament, that the global vaccination drive is the largest religious crusade in the history of the world, that those who don't bow before the prophets of public health or sacrifice their children upon pharma's altar should be ostracized, fired, locked down, hated, and/or lined up and shot, that exercising God-given inalienable rights is selfish, that our immune system stopped working in 2020, that health is sickness and sickness is shame, that we need fraudulent and profit-generating tests to tell us when we're sick, that people who get sick are either committing a crime or are victims of a crime, that fear turns otherwise intelligent adults into needy children, that we can't survive without Papa Government and Mama Pharma, that the government owns our bodies, that mass psychosis is the intentional result of sustained fear mongering, that psychotic people pass and enforce psychotic policies, that right-minded people must act afraid to accommodate germaphobes, that the predator class practices rules for thee and not for me, that human touch is dirty and shameful, that titles trump facts, logic, and reason, that when faced with a choice, nearly all adults will serve their self-interests over the interests of children, that child abuse is bad at home and policy at school, that while informed doctors are sanctioned for sharing informed medical opinions, uninformed schoolteachers freely give medical advice to schoolchildren, that policymakers can see an invisible virus but can't see the visible harm their policies inflict upon children, that school administrators will sell students' freedom and rights in exchange for government handouts, and in the process flush child development, social skills, mental health, and learning potential down the toilet, that parents who defend, among other things, their children's right to breathe are domestic terrorists, that children are responsible for their grandparents' mortality, that children should risk lifelong injury and death allegedly to protect those who have already largely lived their lives, that children should feel guilty for breathing, especially guilty Monday through Friday from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., that children should shut up, shut down, and submit to nonsense, that children's wants, needs, thoughts, feelings, futures, and even their lives just don't matter. Is this really what we want to teach our children? This stops when we join together and stop it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Alicia Miller, and I'm here without a prepared statement or anything, but I came at the request of a friend of mine, and there's a group of concerned parents here, Kids First, that aren't very happy with the mitigation plans for the school district. And so I was asked to come and just let you know that I did pull my daughter out of school last year. I saw what was coming, heading our way, and luckily, my husband and I are blessed with good jobs. We work for our community, and we were able to afford private school, and so my daughter gets to go to school every day, learn conflict resolution, is able to smile at her friends, play, not wear a mask, see people's facial expressions, their smiles when they're sad. She gets to have mentors that teach her, aside from my husband and myself. And all of that happened, again, because we can afford to. A lot of parents in this community can't afford to, but the, one of the main reasons aside from all of the detriment that is being done to the kids with your mitigation plans is that we are a working family, and the uncertainty at following the rules that your board is putting up, I understand that this is a CDC, you know, guided, and there's a bigger government backing on this, but not knowing if I could go to work every day, not knowing if my daughter was going to be able to go to school, not knowing if Ventures was going to open at any given time, we all, I think we all, everyone here that has a child knows how poor our situation is with childcare in this community. It was too much, the anxiety was intense, to the point where, you know, I was seeking counseling because my nerves were shot with not knowing what was going to happen and if we were going to have schooling for my daughter, you know. We were able to escape that because we had the money for it, but I want you to know, kids are being pulled out of school. You know, you're, you're telling people that that's not happening, but it is happening, and it's going to happen more. You're here to serve our community, us parents, we are the community, our children are the community. It's not about the government, it's not about the money, it's about being government, you're here to serve us, so please hear us and work with us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. My name is Jeremy Twaddle. I'm a father of two children in the Sitka School District. I think probably most of you know me. I've been to many of these meetings, including assembly meetings and such, dealing with these masking issues of the, of the children in the schools. So I'll keep it brief because I've already shared all the statistics with you guys that support the very, very, very low potential of any negative or death consequences that these children are subjected to by COVID. We know that, you guys have clearly seen that statistically yourself. So last year, we're in the same place with regarding the masks that we're at now, a year later. The only difference is that now that everybody in the entire community of Sitka, five years and older, has had the opportunity to receive a vaccine if they or their parents have chosen. So my question to this board is, when do you intend to take the masks off the kids and let them go back to breathing and let them get back to learning? Especially these young, young kids. It's extremely difficult for them to comprehend what's going on without seeing facial expressions. Now, I, unlike the Sitka School District, am not trying to tell parents or children what to do or give them medical advice. This is between parents and their children and their medical provider. All that I'm asking is that you allow masks to be optional regardless of case count, because the case count and the bar for that is continually moving. That does not seem like a good metric to me to base putting a mask on someone's face. We know how the flu blew through the school, schools, all of them, in Sitka, regardless that everyone was wearing a mask, all students were. And do you allow the parents of these children to make the medical decisions for these children and not the schools? So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Amy, I have a letter that Dawn sent.
Oh, okay, yeah.
And then I have something too. Do I read them at the same time?
So she's doing two, three minutes?
Yeah, that's, we talked about that. Go ahead and read the letter.
Yeah, just pause between one, and then we'll start the timer for the second one.
Okay. Okay, this one is from my friend. Dear School Board, we are writing to in opposition of masking our children in schools. We ask that we go on record in opposition, have a friend to read this letter at the meeting on our behalf. There's no way masks on children will ever be effectively used because kids are kids. Adults don't even wear them properly, so we don't know how children can be expected to. The masks are unsanitary and contain germs, viruses, bacteria that may be harmful to our children's health. Forcing children to wear masks is cruel, bad for their physical and mental health and well-being. They are being forced to live in fear, fear of dying, fear of breathing, fear of getting a virus that has very low risk for children. At a recent meeting of concerned parents, some of the parents testified that their children no longer look forward to going to school. Some cry, some are frightened, some of their grades have gone down, some children can't talk during math breaks, some are getting headaches, some can't concentrate, some can't hear or understand the lessons, some are disengaged, some are not socializing as much as they used to, or meeting new friends, and some just want to see other children's smiles and hug their friends and teachers. Forced mask-wearing is a distraction to their learning and having a negative effect on their education. Additionally, it wastes teachers' time trying to enforce it. Using children to protect adults is unethical and unproven. We are thankful for in-person school and realize it's not easy to navigate through COVID. We thank the teachers, the staff, the school board for their dedication and hard work for our children. We ask that the Sitka School District COVID mitigation be revisited to accommodate these children that do not choose to wear masks. This is a choice for the parents and the children's right to bodily autonomy. Please let our children breathe fresh air. Respectfully, Dawn and Mark Young. So thank you for that. All right, second time around? Can, you can't hear me? It sounds like it's echoing, though. It's not? Oh, okay. All right. My name is Carrie Johnson, and I'm here to testify about the mitigations. I'm not here to try and convince anyone of wearing masks or not. What I'm concerned about is the mental health of our young children as a result of the imposed mitigations. With enrollment numbers down, parents concerned with their children's learning process, and the need for more support for the teachers, some things need to change now and not after winter break. These ideas I have are from talking with some staff, teachers, and parents. This is my thought, is to soften the mitigations, this starting point, and increase communication and education. I wanted to offer some solution-based ideas. Communication, one and foremost, please change this tomorrow. Teachers need help in the classroom, especially the lower grades. Get parents in there and to let them help immediately. The teachers, the kids, and the parents need this. Teachers are overworked, underpaid, and parents are worried they can't be in the classrooms. Maybe share some of the COVID money with the teachers if you can't get them parents or paras to help. Redo these mitigations, but do them with the teachers as they are the workhorses who have to implement them. Work as a team together to make these mitigations work for all. Maybe have an anonymous suggestion box for the parents, the teachers, and the staff, and look at that, you know, periodically to see what's going on, to kind of keep up to date. And a lot of people don't want to talk. They're afraid of losing their jobs, or having their children singled out and treated differently. Education, educate the kids on wearing a mask. It is beyond me why people are wearing a mask by themselves. I just don't understand it unless it's coming down from the sky or something. So maybe educate the kids so they don't, aren't afraid of their own breath. Follow the city COVID masking regs and not your own. Follow the city COVID masking regs and not your own. Word on the street is that substitute pay has been the same for years. And use some COVID money for this. I know subs who would work if the mask mandate was not in place. Wear masks in the halls maybe, but not in the classrooms as a, you know, kind of a liaison of getting between masking and not masking, like in restaurants, when you're seated, you take your mask off. Teaching phonics with no masks and guilt-free. Try to do an M and an N. It just doesn't work. You're going to have kids who don't know how to talk. You know, we need to communicate. This is hindering our communication. Okay, here's a little story. My last story, it's not a reflection on any teachers. I think it's part of the mitigation. I was talking with a young friend about a math break and I said, oh, hey, yeah, that's great. You get a math break, you get to chat, you get to talk with your friends. And that would be fun. No, they replied, we have to sit there with our mouths shut. I was stunned. I didn't want to show my sadness. And I said, oh, so you won't spread germs? And they nodded. So I'm not sure how that sits with you, but it sat with me in a very disturbing way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, School Board. I'm Julie Stromer. And I'm here to say that I'm not happy with the current COVID mitigations in Sitka schools. I myself have six children, have gone from kindergarten to graduation in this school district. And although our children will be taught by many, many other people in their lives, parents are their first and lifelong teachers. No one can love and care for our children more than we, the parents. From prenatal months on, parents look out for their health, this makes it easier now, material, physical, mental, emotional, and spiritual well-being. These are not the duties, or these are the duties of the parents and not the school district. We parents know our children as individuals. We know of their allergies, their health histories, their natural immunities, and their religious beliefs. No government entities knows of or takes these extremely important factors into consideration, nor can government or school district make such broad, sweeping judgment on what's good for all. For that reason, there is no way COVID mitigations in Sitka schools should ever be mandated or compulsory. Thank you for hearing me. Also, I just want to let you know that my two grandsons played all summer with friends, no masks, and didn't get sick till they went to school and were forced to wear masks. And, you know, that took a little shot to their education since neither one could go to school while the other one was sick and they took turns. And they also are tired after school, just as the gentleman mentioned. And that's most likely because they're not getting enough oxygen during the day. We're not made to rebreathe our own CO2 over and over. And they need to take a rest when they get home just so they can catch up on oxygen. So, yeah, once again, thank you for hearing me.
Thank you.
Is it on? It's on. I'm Mary Todd Anderson. I'm a certified school teacher still. I taught in the district for approximately 20 years. If you cough, if you sneeze, use your elbow, would you please? Maybe we should go back to the basics. But anyway, I've raised two children in the district and they both live in town, Greta and Jason. I'm a grandma to a kindergartner and thank God my son is homeschooling this year. I'm not going to cry, but this is ridiculous, you guys. I don't even think I could handle if Odin was going to school in a mask. He does what he can to keep him off. You know, this is getting so bad, it feels like lockdowns. I've worked in the schools a lot of years and I love the school district, but the way it is right now, no, it's punitive, it feels like lockdown. I can't go volunteer in the classrooms. I can't read. I can see your smile, Blossom, but I can't see everybody's smile. And the rippling effects, it pits the community against each other. I was asked recently, how dare you have a women's fisheries meeting at your house when you don't wear a mask or not vaccinated? Do you understand the rippling effect? I was also asked one time, like, Mary, you were talking to that senior citizen. Well, I'm 71, young, but I was talking to like an 80-some-year-old. How dare you be near that person? You know, do you understand what's happening, you guys? If not, let's wake up. These are God's children, not just yours, not just mine, not just my grandchildren. These are God's and he is not happy. And I can tell you that. I can, I know it with the Holy Spirit and everything else. He is not happy and I think he's waking people up and we better stand up for our rights. And the rippling effect, I called, the whole thing. I called Roger Schmidt. It all relates. It's like Nazi Germany now. Roger, how'd you do? Pitting children against children, they can't go to their performances, they can't do this unless they're vaccinated. How'd you decide that? Oh, the CDC, the Health Director. I'm not picking on Roger, I respect him. It's just the whole entity of all this craziness. And if it doesn't get worse, there'll always be another variant. You guys, there'll always be another formula. And if we continue on this, we're conditioning each other, it's going to get very sad. And it's already getting very sad and very divisive. So I have 58 seconds, let's see. Problems are to be solved. There's a fear or faith, trust or doubt. You guys, we've got to figure this out. It's a whole world agenda. And if you don't get that, wake up, folks. It goes way beyond Sitka. We're like the testing ground. Look at Australia, you know? I'm sorry, they gave up their guns. I mean, it's getting serious, you guys, and we don't want Sitka to get to the point. And I'm glad I took the gun safety course. I'm glad I took the women's pistol course. But honestly, that's beside the point. Just the, all these stories, like even adults, the children overhearing that. You know, how dare you have a meeting at your house or whatever? Oh, you're having more than 10 people? Are we going to be? I know people personally in Canada, they're getting fined $3,000 for having somebody over and making homemade cookies. Where are we going with this? Okay, that's about it. But vengeance is the Lord's. And I'm going to say that right up front. That is a scripture and God's word will not return void without accomplishing what it concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, our next.
Hi, my name is Isabella Dunn. So I want to talk about the masks. It's starting to get a lot of people and their parents really sick because my friends have to get the vaccination because their parents are forcing them. And it's really hard for me because I don't want to see my friends getting forced to do this because it's starting to get a big problem across the school. Because when someone else is sick and they come back to the school, other people think they have COVID. It's happened to me a thousand times because whenever I come back when I have an allergy, people say I have COVID. And I know I don't have COVID because I had the test and it was all negative. And they still think I have COVID and they think I scare the vaccine. I'm not because I don't want to take it because I know it's not good for me. That's why I'm trying to tell my friends that they need to tell their parents that it's not okay for you because I know how it is. Because my mom, my friend, my friend's mom couldn't walk after she got the vaccine. And when they came back, my friend told me about it and I felt so bad. And then my other friend got the vaccination and their parents forced them to do it. And I told them, if your parents make you do it, tell them not to make you because it's starting to become a real big problem because they know that the vaccine is probably good for you, but it's actually not good for you because I've gotten sick because I've had a headache from the entire masking because other people think that a mask is going to help, but it's doing nothing for us. That's all I have.
Thank you very much, Isabella. That's a hard one to follow. But is there anyone else that would like to speak tonight?
I was hoping to bring my computer, Volney Smith. I was drafted when I was 18. I went to NCO school, learned how bio-warfare was taking place. This is nothing but a bio-warfare, folks. Whether you know it or not, they're not going to tell you, but it's all there. I brought the information on a card tonight. I'll give you all of it. If you want to look it up, you can read it all. There's five doctors on the back of this. I've been talking about it for two years or a year and a half now. When Delta hit on the Fourth of July, I was the first one on Problem Corner saying, oh, the Delta is in town. Well, we had an outbreak. That's because it's bio-warfare. Quick spreading, gain-of-function, spike protein. This is being done, folks. It's real. Listening to this kid, think what she's got to go through. This is going to be with her with the rest of her life. The other day, I was down doing a little shopping. I must have been a senior or a sophomore from the other side of the island over there and she's wearing a mask, buying Christmas presents. She says, I said, why are you wearing a mask? Well, they say we have to wear it. I said, why are you wearing it? Well, because I have to wear it. I said, why are you wearing it? Well, uh, I feel safe in it. Because when I travel, I just feel safe in it. Are you kidding me? Those masks don't work. Who thinks those masks work? That's the silliest part about it. On the back of this card, I got five doctors for you, Peter McCollum. That's just hoping to bring on tonight. I couldn't get my computer working. He's a heart surgeon and he was on today on the Stu Peters Show. Can you forward a little bit? A little bit.
You'll remember this one. In September, former New Orleans Saints linebacker Paris Harrelson died of a heart attack at age 37. That same month, at the University of Ottawa, football player Francis Perron died abruptly after the team's opening game. In Columbia, South Carolina, two high school football players died suddenly within a week of each other. Tennis pro Jeremy Chardy, one of the top 100 in the world, says that since getting vaccinated, his health has deteriorated so badly that he cannot train and he cannot play.
That's insane.
Italian volleyball champion, Jessica Marcone, says she can't play either due to side effects from this bioweapon. Could you go on like this for a long, long?
Can she just go with it?
Yeah, can you state your name for the record and then?
Yeah, hi, I'm Linda Marlin. I'm sorry. Oh, okay. Really, I'm fairly close to the microphone, please. Okay. Oops, it's upside down.
You just state your, oh, you did. I'm sorry, you did.
Yeah, hi. Just push play, okay.
There are news stories like this every few days. And do all of them have something to do with so-called COVID vaccines? Well, we don't know. But there is clearly a real wave of this going around and people are noticing. The powers that be, of course, say it's all a coincidence. But keep in mind, these are the same people who tried to ban, even suggesting that COVID came from a lab. They're doctors. They're propagandists, straight out of 1984. Well, Dr. Peter McCullough isn't a propagandist. He's a real cardiologist, a real epidemiologist, a real internist. And throughout this pandemic, he has refused to let a bunch of hacks tell him how to practice medicine. And he says there is no coincidence going on here and that these young athletes are dropping dead due to myocarditis. Dr. Peter McCullough joins us now. Thank you for being here, we appreciate it.
Thanks for having me.
Is it time to just stop this for kids, for young people, until we get this all sorted out?
Stu, we desperately need a report in all these rash of deaths, which is absolutely alarming. I've seen montages of death after death on the field, a lot of European ex-US, but now US athletes. And we desperately need who's taking the vaccine and when. I commented with Rob Mitchell on his show before the Olympics, we had data that 80% of the Olympians had taken one of the vaccines. And of course, they're all very different. But now that we know that with the messenger RNA vaccines, there's official FDA warnings for myocarditis in a paper by Jessica Rose and myself from Incurrent Problems of Cardiology, we know now that myocarditis reported in the VERS system extends up to age 50. So it's not just exclusively in younger individuals. And you know with myocarditis, when it exists in any form, a part of the treatments do is no physical activity for about three to six months. So these athletes know, if they report signs and symptoms of myocarditis, they know that they're out for the season. My worry is that these young people are taking the vaccines, they're forced into it, and that the risk period starts and we don't know how long it lasts for myocarditis. It may be just a few weeks or months or longer that in fact they have subclinical symptoms or mild symptoms, don't report it. And then with the physical activity, notice most of the deaths are not occurring off the field. They're actually in competition. That in fact is driving cardiac death. Stu, we don't see this anymore because the former leading cause of athletic sudden death is called hypertrophic cardiomyopathy. Now there's almost uniform screening through high school, college, and professional levels. We don't have young kids at risk go out in the field with this congenital form of a cardiac.
Marshall Albertson.
You know, we're not used to seeing sudden deaths on the field like this and now the world is shocked.
There's only one thing that has changed in our world since this uptick and it's the rollout of these shots. I mean, we have to be honest about that. Is there any reason to believe? Now, it's tragic that these athletes are dropping over. It's tragic that people in top-peak physical condition are dying, especially during the middle of competitions. I mean, all of that is tragic. These are family members that are lost, they probably didn't need to be. But I want to talk about our kids. Is there any reason to believe that this myocarditis uptick will not be apparent or affect small children as well? I mean, this is going to affect them as well, is it not?
There has been descriptions of myocarditis before the COVID-19 vaccines. And from Finland, there's a good study from Finland in one of the major cardiology journals, 2018, I believe. And there is clear that there is an age dependency and risk. There's very little spontaneous myocarditis due to other viruses like parvovirus, for instance, in the age groups of under five or five to 11. All the action is really over age 11, up through the teenage years. And it really does pick up there. And in that study, again, before the COVID-19 vaccine, far more in boys than girls. It must be eight to two, boys to girls. And it must be related in some fashion to puberty and androgens and their effects on the heart. We see the same blossoming, by the way, of hypertrophic cardiomyopathy in puberty. So in putting that together, there is going to be no doubt about it if the children ages 12 to 17 are vaccinated in large numbers, if that happens. Paper by Tracy Hogan, College of Nursing in California Davis, suggests that there will be far more hospitalizations for myocarditis. We know in the Hogan paper, 86% of these cases are so serious that kids have to be in the hospital, which is a very, very serious part. To hospitalized a teenager, for instance, is very rare. We know this is a serious complication. And that is far more likely to be hospitalized with vaccine-induced myocarditis than actually be hospitalized with COVID-19, the respiratory illness, because it's so mild in that age group.
Which I have right now. I was telling you before we came on. Apparently I have the set of symptoms being branded and marketed as this China virus. Okay, we'll get through it. Question, these doctors, these so-called doctors, these zombies with stethoscopes, how do you see them justifying this uptick in young myocarditis patients?
I interviewed for the McCullough Report just last night, Dr. Mark McDonald, who is a psychologist, a psychiatrist in Los Angeles. His new book is out. And the term in the title of his new book, Stu, is mass psychosis. And McDonald thinks that in fact physicians are swept up in what's considered a mass psychosis. Meaning that they've had the critical elements by the. The critical elements are having a period of time of lockdown and isolation, being taken away from things that one enjoys. That's number two. Number three is actually free-floating anxiety. And then actually they're offered, number four, the caper, is they're offered a solution, a single solution, the vaccine. And in this theory, the theory gets credit, actually, to Dr. Mathias Desmond at URC of Gent in Belgium. He says that there is no limit to the absurdity in the solution. So in a sense, our solution is the vaccine.[1778.62] But the absurdity of it is the fact that vaccines are so unsafe, and that we've had just enormous numbers of doubts and non-fatal complications. And in this mass psychosis, doctors still continue to encourage patients to take these vaccines.
Why are we even calling them vaccines, Dr. McCullough?
It's the wrong term. In fact, Dr. David Wiseman, former J&amp;J scientist, who's testified now at multiple FDA meetings, continues to emphasize to the FDA that these are gene transfer technologies, and they're classified by the FDA, gene transfer technologies. And with that, they actually have their own sets of special regulatory standards, including much longer-term follow-up. You know, as a cardiologist, Stu, I can prescribe a messenger RNA drug, there is one that exists. It's called piterasan. And piterasan is used to treat amyloidosis, but it is a gene transfer technology product. So if I use it as a doctor, I must consider that it's a gene transfer technology product. When Pfizer, Moderna are administered, you're right, they should be considered as gene transfer technology products. They are transferring the gene into the human body that codes for the dangerous Wuhan spike protein that we know, everything about this spike protein is dangerous. It damages the brain, the heart, the other vital organs, damages blood vessels, causes blood clots. Now there's data from China showing that the S2 segment of the spike protein actually interacts with two cancer genes, P53 and the BRCA gene. So the concern now is one or two injections, probably not enough exposures, Stu, but we start to get to boosters now every six months, and loading the body with spike protein. Each injection probably takes a year and a half to get it out of the body. We are going to accumulate spike protein and probably cause giant new, basically chronic disease epidemics of these degenerative diseases, including cancer.
With everything that you're saying, do you see any reason to continue with this shot program for kids? I mean, adults are going to have to have their own choice, whatever. If you know what you know about this thing and you still choose to go get it, I guess that's on you. I'll stay away from you, because I'm sure it's one of these so-called vaccinated super-spreaders that I got my Rona from here. But, you know, for kids, should there just be a flat-out ban? Stop this right now.
I think many of the other countries that have at least banned Moderna, but across the board, we should just go ahead and leave the children out of it. I've been on national TV telling American News for months, leave the children out of it. Do you know, at the FDA meetings on two occasions now, in the meeting minutes, the general agreement was through May, that 40% of American kids have already had COVID-19, and you can't get it a second time. Finally, our CDC has missed.
Justin Sutherland.
Information Act request, they don't have a single case of someone getting COVID-19 a second time and never passing it to anybody. And so now, through the Delta outbreak, my estimates are 80% of children have already had COVID-19. They can't give it to anybody, and we know that, Stu, because right now, all the kids are back at school. No outbreaks, none. I was at a symposium recently with Scott Atlas, who presented the data to the group in Columbus, Ohio, showing that the safest profession in the world right now is to be a kindergarten or junior high teacher, around kids all day long, because the kids are an immunologic buffer. So under no circumstances should children in any position, basically be mandated or forced to take these vaccines. Sadly, there are children who die of COVID-19, there's been about 600, but it's the same group that died with influenza, and we can't stop that either. And it's because they have cystic fibrosis or terminal cancers or other sad conditions, that by and large, young, healthy children can be well-managed with COVID-19. The vast majority need nothing whatsoever. But even if there's severe symptoms, Stu, you know, we use inhale bedasenide, albuterol, some azithromycin, even methylprednisolone, weight-dose aspirin, we always get the kids through it, even on severe symptoms, no indications for a vaccine.
We have heard a story here recently of a set of parents taking their eight-year-old daughter in to get this shot. And she didn't want this shot, and they literally had to pin her down. She was screaming, physically fighting, they had to pin her down, and she was screaming and yelling about how she knows about these athletes that are dying from this thing. She didn't want it. She's eight years old. The trauma that those parents have now put this child through, and the long-lasting, irreversible damage that they could have done to their child as a result of this, I think there's going to be a lot of parents in dire straits emotionally, psychologically, after their kids start to experience the irreparable, long-lasting, dangerous side effects from these shots. It's my opinion that they just need to stop altogether for kids. I just, I don't see any reason why kids, and you mentioned the 600 that have died, this program has looked into those 600, all of them had serious pre-existing underlying conditions because that's what led to the serious reaction to this so-called virus. But the virus is virtually not dangerous and affects no kids virtually at all, is that right?
That's true. In fact, I think analyses by Scott Johnson, separately by Marty McRee from Johns Hopkins show, we think there's one child who was previously healthy who died of COVID-19, and sadly, that one didn't get the early treatment. That one could have been safe. But you're right, there are children, it's rare, who have cystic fibrosis, these other conditions, and the bottom line is, it's the same number that would succumb to influenza. In fact, last year, we heard there was relatively little influenza, and it was just, it was kind of a net-net. By and large, the children should be left alone. You talked about this idea.
Justin MacLeod.
We're seeing their child take a vaccine. If we know, in fact, there's more likely to be harm than any benefit, that actually could be characterized as personal assault or personal injury. But the most common situation we see is when there's divorced parents, and one parent wants the vaccine and the other one doesn't. Remember, the vaccines are research, so the parents need to understand they're trying to force their child into research. I think the safest and most conservative approach is to defer on the vaccines and just be ready to treat COVID-19 if it occurs. That way, no one's harmed. You're right, if a vaccine is taken, the vast majority of people take the vaccines, have no injury.
The scary part about all of this is that the media tells these parents that ivermectin is a horse dewarmer paste, and that people are crazy if they try to use it. The Nobel Prize-winning ivermectin, it did not get a Nobel Prize for saving the Kentucky Derby, okay? So these are just huge lies. Joe Rogan called out the CNN top medical contributor right on his program and said, what, how do you feel about working for a network that just consistently lies to people? And so all of these treatments, ivermectin, hydroxychloroquine, the aspirin, the things that you spoke about here, these things, vitamin D, C, quercetin, zinc, all the things that the top experts in the world are talking about, how this has been treated successfully, are being demonized by the media. Do you have any idea or any reason why that might be? My, I mean, obviously, I'm thinking that it's because 70% of the budget for these media conglomerates comes from pharmaceutical companies. So obviously, they don't want to speak out against that or offer any alternative to these shots. Do you think that's what it is?
I told Tucker Carlson that honestly now about six months ago, I think the suppression of early treatment is really designed to promote fear, suffering, isolation, hospitalization of death, actually by design, in order to prepare the patient, the population to accept mass vaccination. And that's honestly, that was my opinion six months ago. And it's not just the media, Stu. Do you know, September, beginning of September, the American Medical Association announced an initiative to abolish the use of ivermectin, abolish. Stu, since when does the AMA try to abolish the use of, AMA is not a treatment organization, that's a physician political organization. They have no role in recommending or not recommending treatment. Fortunately, the Association of American Physicians Surgeons shot back a letter, cease and desist. Ivermectin, supported by over 63 clinical studies, is front-lined in Japan. Japan is even more sophisticated than America in its medical response. It's first-line in Japan because it's so effective. It's squashed the curves down in Mexico, South America, across India. Now, ivermectin is part of a sequence multi-drug approach for COVID-19. You mentioned Joe Rogan, I'm going to be on with him next week, we'll go over the protocol. Joe received exactly how I drew it up for America and for the world in the two seminal publications I had last year in 2020 on.
Mickey Barker.
From COVID-19, it's actually now copyrighted as the McCullough Protocol. And it's important to realize, no single drug is necessary nor sufficient to treat COVID-19. We put the drugs in combination, you're going to be on a combination of drugs, just like I was, and you'll be delivered through the illness just fine.
I believe that. Thank you, and I appreciate that. I appreciate everything that you're doing, and so does all of America, the sane people in this country. Dr. Peter McCullough, thank you so much for being here, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
That story that I told Dr. Peter McCullough and you during that interview about the eight-year-old.
Please do the right thing.
I'll say thank you for the last six, seven, eight people, whatever that was. Are there any other persons to be heard tonight? I'm Anna Hansen. And one thing I just heard on that video that I was going to also attest to is that I did, we all got COVID, my whole family, and we did do the ivermectin, and three days later, we were fine. And so I am definitely living, breathing proof that that treatment works, and I just wanted to say that. But I would like to address the Sitka School District COVID mitigation policy or plans. First off, I want to say that I'm not here to attack anybody. I have some heated words, but they are not directly at any of you. There is a system, and it's flawed, as we can kind of see by the full room here. But these are, these are just my thoughts and my concerns that I just want to bring up to you. So I believe that the Sitka School District and Superintendent lack the proper authority to issue such a sweeping order. They do not have carte blanche authority to impose whatever disease control measures they see fit. As we speak, school boards around the country are dropping their mitigation policies due to unconstitutional measures. The Sitka School District has gone above and beyond what is considered acceptable regarding mitigation plans. This isn't about whether masks work or not. I believe we've gone past that. This is about government overreach, violating our God-given rights, and forcing Americans to cover their face is unconstitutional. It's unlawful, and it's wrong. Currently, this is today, I checked this today, the CDC does not recommend masking for the flu, which, as we know, is also transmitted by aerosols. Think about that. So you can go to the website right now, you can pull it up, and it says, wash your hands, you know, stay home if you don't feel good, cover into your, sneeze into your elbow. Nowhere does it say masks. COVID doesn't go anywhere, and hiding from it is not going to make it help. We, we have to, sorry, I do believe that you are all here to try and help and to do what you feel is best. But as parents, we hold the authority to do what is right for our children and family. The fact that there is a roomful of people should tell you that as government officials, we aren't happy. There's people here that are not happy. The damage is done. The best we can do is try to learn from our mistakes, do better, move forward, working together. So please, let us be, make our own decisions for our own family, and please take a step back and allow us to do what's right for our children. Thank you.
Hello, Iris Nash. I think a lot of important things have been said today that I won't repeat. I just want to introduce myself as a mother of two young children, a four-year-old and a six-year-old, who are actively homeschooling. We are a fishing family, we're trollers. And I've had very little reason or requirement to mask my children, for which I am grateful, based off of our lifestyle. And I recognize that is not the case for most of the world. But I have had one particular experience that I wanted to share with you tonight, attempting to reach out to other opportunities for my kids in our community. We partook in a 4-H activity, and it was masked indoors. And there was this sweet girl who was six years old, who really engaged with me, and she wanted to tell me her last name, and she tried, and she tried, and I got it wrong like 10 times, and she kept trying, and I was so impressed with her ability to persevere and really try to reach and communicate with me at six years old through a mask when she wasn't getting that feedback, that confidence that I was understanding her, and she kept trying, and that she had the perseverance and the confidence to keep trying to talk to a new adult who she hadn't had previous engagement with. And I, you know, really tried to support her and let her know, keep trying, I'm trying to hear you. And she walked, she walked around the table, and she came to me and she said, I'm going to come closer, is that okay? And I said, yeah, it's okay. And I pulled down my mask to let her know, like, I'm a person, I'm here, you can, you can keep trying to talk to me and to reach me, I'm listening. And she tried a couple more times, and she eventually gave up. And I saw this happen multiple times within an hour with these kids, with eight kids in a room, their voices are not being heard. And I think one thing we can all agree on here today is that our children are our future. And for them, knowing they have a voice and they have meaning in our communities and in our families and in our classrooms is paramount for creating a future that we all need. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Well said. Well done.
I am a mother of five, I have three kids in the district. I'm here to express my concerns with the Sitka School District's COVID mitigation. I'm here addressing my concerns that this doesn't dismiss my great appreciation for keeping our schools open. My main concern is that my children are being masked all day long for hours at a time without adequate mask breaks. This is a virus that is 99.99815% survivable for children, zero to age 19. Children are at higher risk of being killed from many other things, car wrecks, plane wrecks, getting hit by lightning than dying of COVID. So anyway, I could go on and on about the science and data that supports my views, as there is a wealth of science from all over the world that should be considered, and that supports the lack of effectiveness of masks and the risk associated with wearing masks for extended periods of time. But I won't go on about the science, as this is easy to find and is easy to understand. I am concerned that if you are a school board member that is representing the entire school district's needs and health of the children, that you have by now done your due diligence in doing your own research on this topic. And in doing that, if you still believe that keeping our children in a mask all day is in their best interest, you are wrong, and you don't know how to find real science, data sets, and this is concerning in itself because you are in charge of our child's well-being. There's a recent study in Germany on masking children, with over 20,000 students, that found impairments caused by wearing masks are reported as irritability in 60% of these kids, headaches of 53%, difficulty concentrating 50%, less happiness 49%, reluctance to go to school 44%, delays 42%, impaired learning 38%, and drowsy and fatigue at 37%. These are just some of the physical side effects that are being reported. This doesn't even touch on the social and emotional welfare of the children. The emotional welfare has been highly overlooked. It is time to listen and really hear what these COVID mitigations are really doing and impacting our children. If you don't acknowledge that masks, social distancing, and keeping our kids out of school for possible exposures, and what risks that are being, um, sorry, I'm losing my spot, then you're not representing the community as a whole. You are not listening after two years of science and data and sold our children out for the money trail that COVID is. I can tell you that school was the place I used to send my children to learn, to grow, to socialize and grow their emotional development. I think that we can all agree that these mitigations are proving to have a huge hindrance on their education.
Finish, Jessica.
And we have seen from the current maps and peak testing. I can tell you firsthand that my children are having huge, huge impairments with their education. They have gone from having a great elementary education and background with great teachers and with foundations. I have a child with ADHD, and she has low self-esteem.
Go ahead and wrap it up.
Severely depressed. She feels like a failure. She is crying every single day. I have a nine-year-old that is scared of everything, and she can't wear her glasses because her mask fogs it up, so she can't see. She can't see her material, she can't see the board.
Thank you for testifying, we need to ask, you recognize the term limit, thank you.
One more thing is, can you guys please consider giving the rights of our children back to the parents? We are in charge of their health and well-being, and we really want you to be advocates for our children's health.
Thank you.
Do we have any other persons to be heard tonight?
Hi, Sarah Laurie. I was not planning on speaking, but I feel compelled to. I'm going to certainly be in the minority here. But I want to address this issue of are masks unconstitutional? They are not. If you think about it, government oversight touches every part of our lives. Each morning, we eat food made from FDA-approved ingredients and we take FDA-approved medications. We climb into our cars and we fasten our federally mandated seat belts. While driving the state's speed limit, we might turn on the radio to hear stations broadcasting according to FCC guidelines and perhaps see motorcyclists wearing state-required helmets. We then spend our day at a workplace governed by OSHA. Few people question these restrictions. A mask mandate is not an example of governmental overreach, but is instead another policy intended to help keep us safe. So long as a government safety measure is neutral and generally applicable and promotes medical necessity, it does not violate the Constitution. Some examples of arguments for why mask mandates are illegal. At a sit-in, Costco Karen stated, I'm an American, I have constitutional rights. A group called Health Freedom Idaho protested the Boise mask mandate. One protester said, I'm afraid where this country is headed if we roll over and abide by control that goes against our constitutional rights. Arguments such as these referencing the Constitution are common. What gives the government the authority to order citizens to cover their face? The answer is saving lives by stopping the spread of COVID-19. If this were a socialist country, that would be reason enough that this is the United States of America and our Constitution secures our freedom of choice, even when our choice is to not wear a mask. The Constitution makes mask-wearing not unconstitutional. The Tenth Amendment states that all powers not delegated to the United States of the Constitution nor prohibited by it to the states or reserved to the states respectively or to the people. The Tenth Amendment empowers state and local officials to pass and enforce necessary laws. The First Amendment protects freedom of speech, press, petition, assembly, and religion. A mask doesn't keep you from expressing yourself, nor does a mask require that you express yourself in a certain way. At most, they limit how you can speak, but not what you can say. Additionally, all constitutional rights are subject to the government's authority to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the community. Many people object that masks violate their right to liberty, their body, but the Supreme Court has determined that mask mandates don't violate any constitutional rights to privacy, health, or bodily integrity. We don't have a constitutional right to infect other people. The protection of our liberties rides on the assumption that the exercise of our rights must not endanger others. We have no support for this position because none exist. If you would, if we, if we all in this room, and I believe we're all here for the same reasons, and we all want the best for everybody in this town, if we could put aside politics that have poisoned discussion, we could see that calling for masks is a step towards preserving humankind and not government tyranny. Thank you. Thank you.
Gavin Holder. I'm here because I actually like masks personally. However, I don't like masks when they're not being used appropriately or when the mask being used is in an inappropriate situation. For, I was born and raised here, but for instance, I spent five years in the Marine Corps and one of the things that I enjoyed the most was the gas chamber in which they would tear gas you. I personally found that quite enjoyable. However, I would not use any of the masks here in this building that I am aware of. I would not use this mask for it. And looking up the size comparison to the water droplets that COVID can carry, be carried on and tear gas, they're very comparable and I wouldn't want to use any of these. So I don't see how that these masks would, any of these masks would function for the intended purpose. And it is important to know that yes, OSHA and those government agencies do regulate masks and their use. You can look up the, you can go to the website of NIO, the National Institute of Occupational Safety and Health and see if they have any recommendations. I have not found any for biological contaminants such as COVID-19 or any of the like. If you do find any, I would love to hear it, but I have not found any. So I don't see how mandating masks would help much because the institutes and the organizations that are related to this topic haven't come out with anything or the like that would guarantee the prevention. It's similar to how there is the level of masks and personal protective equipment for like asbestos or paint fumes and the like. They have regulation for that, but they don't have it for COVID-19 or other biological contaminants. That's, that's my issue with masks and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other persons to be heard tonight?
Good evening. My name is Wendy Dugan and I have a child in 11th grade at Sitka High School. I'm here to speak on behalf of my family regarding the COVID mitigation measures and direction that the school district has been heading lately. I cannot in good conscience support the measures that are being imposed on our children right now. At this point in my teen's life, she has the right to guide her own health as she sees fit. Wearing a mask all day affects her breathing. It makes her feel unwell and progressively stuffier as the days go on each week. She gets a slight reprieve over the weekend. She has had more colds since the mask policy began in the school than she had in years. We know this is causing harm to her. In addition, my kids have been subjected to intrusive questions about their health and vaccination status at school. They have been harassed to wear a mask a certain way. They have been subjected to dangerous mask-wearing while exercising. It's not safe. They have been left out of extracurricular activities due to the measures which include intrusive COVID testing and it discriminates based on their vaccination status. All of the above have led my children to become disenfranchised with their public school education. As a parent, I'm appalled to see this district regularly advertising experimental pharmaceutical products. I'm sickened to see how staff have even promoted prizes to kids that they could win if they sell their body to a science experiment. I'm deeply disappointed that the district is agreeing to impose authoritarian health measures on our children in exchange for a temporary pot of money from the CARES Act. I'm also thoroughly tired of receiving district communications that pertain to absolutely nothing regarding our kids' actual education. I did not enroll my children in this district to see it become an endless COVID-fear-mongering campaign of case rates, alert levels, masking, testing, vaccination, status, et cetera. We're tired of it. It has nothing to do with their education. We're tired of it. The bottom line, my family has lost trust in the district to provide a positive and appropriate education. Referring to a statement on the first page of the Sitka School District Board Policy, it reads in part, "We will not allow discrimination of any kind. We will not permit students to become disenfranchised. We will not tolerate staff ineffectiveness, and we will recognize that risk-taking behavior is necessary for progress and will not negatively judge individuals who assume these roles." I would like to hear how you intend to uphold these principles in order for our children to succeed and for the public school system to remain relevant. This district and community has so much to lose by imposing freedom-crushing measures on our children. If these measures are to remain in effect, enrollment will continue to drop. It's dropped significantly since the lockdown in 2020.
I'm going to have to ask you to wrap up your comments.
Sure, I'm almost done. It's going to hurt the district's bottom line further. Once people leave, many will be gone for good, perhaps for generations. Clearly, an appropriate exit plan was not considered when these COVID mitigations began. And I would suggest that the district realize this error quickly, quickly change course because you're going to face irreparable loss. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else that would like to speak tonight?
So my name is Karen Addicks and kind of like Sarah, I didn't think I'd speak, but yet I realize that I usually feel I have to. This is a matter of choice. Parents want the right to choose for their children. But you say, a mask makes everyone safe. Well, I'm sorry, but there is no safe in this world. Every time you put your child in a car, your child is at risk of a car accident. But we're not going to quit driving. We're not going to quit doing ordinary life things. Everyone should be able to make their own decisions. I don't feel the mask stops the germs, which we've talked about with colds going all around. Let's see, I didn't really prepare all my remarks. Ventilation and air quality have been shown to be more important than mask-wearing and mask-wearing does impede breathing. So I think that's safety and choice. There is no safety in this world. You cannot guarantee safety. Parents have a right to make their own children's decision. Adults have the right to make their own choice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Ron Mears and I've got to tell you, this is the first time I've been to a school board meeting. But I'm kind of disenfranchised with the way this whole thing runs. It's like, does everyone on the board, is it a requirement that you have a school board meeting fully masked when the rest of the place doesn't have that? Is that a requirement for you to be on the school board to be masked? Is that a requirement for you?
They don't have to answer you.
Okay, well, that's my problem here is that all these people have come up to try and talk and say what's going on with their kids. Thankfully, I don't have any kids in school anymore. But this to me bothers me that you can come here to represent all of these people and their children, but it's falling on deaf ears, deaf ears, and it's kind of like when you go to an assembly meeting anymore. So that's basically all I want to say to you. Have a good night.
Thank you. Sarah, anybody else? There's not a whole lot of you left. Oh.
Hello, my name is Chris Nash. I am a commercial fisherman. My wife came up earlier. I have a four and a six-year-old. I lived here for several years and then moved back to Juneau to, like, thought that's where we wanted to be, but after the pandemic started, I was following it very closely and I was upset to see what felt like the dissolving of the social fabric of that place. And it became, it began feeling very much like a big city and not the place that I knew growing up. And I wanted to come back to Sitka because I enjoyed the small-town feel. I wanted my children to go to a school where, where they had that close connection. And I feel like the mask-wearing is, as other people have talked about, very disruptive to communication and I, yeah, for that reason, we've chosen to homeschool our kids. Something else that I find relevant is as we talk about health and what, it feels like it's been a very unidimensional conversation about what is health. One thing that's very striking to me from the CDC website is adjusted for age, when you look at comorbidities on who is actually dying, that fear and anxiety or stress and anxiety disorders is third, above, above diabetes. So when we're talking about health, what is, it just seems to me that there's not, there's not, it's misguided. And I'm trying to assume the best intentions of everybody. But yeah, I'm, as a parent, I'm very concerned and I believe that we need to be putting our children's priorities above, above all else. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other persons to be heard? All right, oh, go ahead.
Hello all. My name is Tiffany Lebon. I am first and foremost a mother to an incredible student athlete in this district. And while I could sit here and quote current and historical statistics, I don't feel that's the best use of my time, so I'll talk about why I'm really here. I am here to stand in strong opposition to the current COVID mitigations you are imposing on the most vulnerable members of our community. Not only do I have a daughter at Blatchley who would quote, "Just like to play volleyball without a stupid mask or be tested every week when she's not sick," her words, not mine. Additionally, I am an employee of the district and I am choosing to risk my livelihood as a single mother to stand for the youngest students in our district. What we are doing is not okay. Every single thing we do specifically at the elementary age will be a foundational brick to who they become as people and how they interact in the world they will live in, not the world we live in. Hasn't that always been the goal? The reality is these mitigations wholly detract from every single child in the district's cognitive development at every level and age. Like I stated before, my daughter is an athlete. She has very serious promise and she plans to go to college. That's what I did. I earned my degree through an athletic scholarship. It's in psychology, so I do understand what I'm saying. We are directly affecting them in every aspect of their life and health. I have the wisdom to see that. There must be a stringent and immediate evaluation of these mitigations like tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other persons to be heard tonight? All right, it looks like not. And so we will move on to item nine on the agenda, which is the school highlights. Casey, do you want to? Casey? All right, are you ready, Mr. Denver? We're ready for you.
All right. Thank you. Good evening. Just, I'm going to share some highlights, I think, tonight with Mr. Howser. He's going to give some KEAT highlights as well. First off, just wanted to mention parent-teacher conferences again. We ended up having 97% of our KEAT families participate this year, which usually were around 94, 95%. I think that was the most we've had in my 12-year tenure there. Approximately 30, 36% of families participated virtually and 64% in-person with those conferences. We've been having some winter playground fun out there on the playground with the snow we've had lately, lots of snowmen being built, super fast slides with the precipitation and snow suits and those sorts of things. And then also just lots of forests. Kids have really been enjoying their time at recess this past week or so. I want to mention, we're going to start up a podcasting kind of social group after September. I want to mention, we're going to start up a podcasting kind of social group after school. Our AmeriCorps has been doing podcasting and storytelling with his sister and is going to kind of bring his skills and experience with that to our school and piggyback off of the Halloween storytelling collaboration he did with Ms. Simic. So we're excited to get that started and then hope to expand to a couple larger groups after winter break as well. The Wednesday before Thanksgiving, we did a school-wide gratitude bracelet project. Ms. Horton kind of helped spearhead that and put that together for the school. And on the bracelets, there's little beads. And it was inspired by a traditional pilgrim poem, but it was rewritten to represent Southeast Quinkit cultural values. And I believe that was rewritten by Jewel LeBlanc, our cultural director. Kids had fun with that. Fifth-grade classroom project that's coming up is the Giving Tree. And students will go down to Wells Fargo and pick off of their ornaments there and then learn about the process of giving and buy gifts for kids that are in need in our community and kind of give back to the community that way. That's coming up. And next week, we'll also be doing our second round of MAP assessments. Any questions?
Yes, not. Thanks.
All right.
Thanks for sticking around.
Yeah.
I think we lost Ben, didn't we? Okay. Sandra, do you want to go next? And nobody had a report. Jill wasn't able to come, right? Oh. Oh, perfect. Okay.
So we had quite the crew before the meeting, so thank you for that. Wrapping up swim season. Sorry about the volleyball miscommunication, but there's a lot going on. And then Allstate Music with two first chairs, which is absolutely incredible. And we're so happy and excited that they were able to go to Anchorage in person and actually have that experience. We've been busy. We have wrestlers going to Juneau again this weekend. Basketball teams started official practice tonight. Cheers started tonight as well. We're looking forward to our holiday basketball tournament. And we will be having it December 16th through 18th. And we'll be hosting the boys and girls from Bristol Bay, Glen Allen, and Petersburg. So we'll have a full slate of games for three straight nights. We'll have Pet Band playing. We'll have Cheerleaders on the sideline. And it's, we're trying to get back into the school spirit and really get school going again. We are wrapping up the first semester. We're going to extend a little bit into January. We'll finish up on January the 14th. So we're wrapping up classes today in our homeroom. We worked on semester two schedules. Had students look at what was already scheduled, if we needed to make adjustments or any changes. We're going to try to have those done before Christmas. And then this weekend, we have SAT. Next weekend, we're going to have an opportunity for Saturday School. So anybody that's a little behind or needs a little extra help, we're going to run a Saturday School next weekend. And hopefully, going into Christmas, we can all have a nice break. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Bit of a downgrade from Jill, I know. Bear with me. I'm reading her email, so you're going to have to look at me, but imagine her. So she says, "Our kids are having such a great time at school and are so happy to be here every day. Three students actually asked their teacher if they could stay at school longer. Kids are so proud of getting bare paws that when they are turning them into the office, some even do a little dance, while others are just gleaming with pride. This is me talking, not her. I have a first grader who has earned a couple Baronoff bare paws. And it's just, it's a fun little thing, and she comes home real excited about it. So that's something cool that they're able to do." Picking up, we have been busy learning to read, write, and add, and learn all about number sense. Our silent auction started, and I'd like to thank our generous community for donating wonderful items. And Caitlin Hole, she is Baronoff's new secretary, and she has spearheaded this year's silent auction. During the month of November, we all came up with things that we are thankful for, like families, snow, dogs, turkeys, and friends. Mr. Hole taught each music class the Turkey Tango. And last week, they all got together outside and did the Turkey Tango.
Thank you, Jill. I mean Tyler. And I don't see Mandy here tonight. I think I saw her earlier, but, okay. All right, thank you for sticking around and giving us those reports. Is Andrew here? I don't see. He's not going to make it?
He's not going to make it.
Okay. All right. We'll postpone that one then. So we will table the Sitka Community Recreation Initiative report. And Sarah, then you can go ahead and come on up. It's your turn. And thank you for sticking around.
Yeah. Okay, I have a PowerPoint prepared to share with you. A couple of important notes that I want to make really clear at the outset. This data that I'm presenting is somewhat imperfect, and it's definitely not capturing all of what's going on. That is something that I'm working to improve. Of course, I have to do reporting, and this is part of my reporting. So I just want you to know that these are the numbers of what we were able to capture of what the AmeriCorps members are doing in the schools, but clearly, they do a lot more. So just know, I'm working on improving that constantly, but I just want to share what I have from last year with you. Okay. Next, I guess. Okay. I was told I have 15 minutes, so I prepared an agenda. First introduction of myself, Sarah Laurie. Oh, can you go back, Chris? Thanks. This is my fifth year with the AmeriCorps program. And it's been just nothing but fun. No, it's really, really great. And I am thankful to be a partner with the schools. We're going to run through all these things. And then I've got five minutes at the end for questions. Oh, it's going fast. Okay. What is AmeriCorps? You might have some ideas about it. It is, it used to be called the Corporation for National Community Service, but it's now just called AmeriCorps. Can you go back, Chris? And it is a federal agency that engages millions of Americans in service through its core programs. The flow of funds, I write a grant, and then it goes up to Serve Alaska. That goes to AmeriCorps, and then the money comes back to the district, who I partner with to administer the program. The members in the district are provided at no cost to the school district, aside from last year when we got CARES Act money, which I think we put to good use getting additional AmeriCorps members. Why do AmeriCorps members do it? Top five reasons. Oh, Chris, go back. Professional development. This is from studies that, or surveys, rather, that AmeriCorps has done. They want professional development. They want experience in a field. Of course, there's the lure of the education award. It's between $4,000 and $6,000. And they are generally focused on achievement. The members want to gain skills and experience in the schools and then go on in their careers, and then they want to serve other people. The mission, as I have described it, of the Sitka-AmeriCorps program is to mitigate the effects of high A scores, which you all will be familiar with, through developmental relationships and enrichment activities. And then I also wrote in that we are working to mitigate learning loss. So our beneficiaries are everybody in the school with high A scores. The member experience, can you go? Yeah, this one. As you will probably be aware, you know, there's members in the schools, and then there's also members at various mental health organizations around town and other nonprofits, all doing the same kind of work. Because this data set is from last year, these are all the sites that were included and that I captured data for. But I'm only going to share the schools with you today. My performance measure, this is what I said I was going to do. We're going to serve 600 individuals, and we're going to measure resilience of at least 480. So what did I do? Well, we certainly exceeded the number of people that AmeriCorps members were able to serve. However, the measurement part of it needs a little bit of work. We were only able to capture 259. So here's some numbers for you. Total hours served and students reached. I think, interestingly, 80% were group interventions. Could you go back for a sec? Thanks. We had, less than 17% met the 16-hour threshold to get the survey. But of those, 63% had increased resilience. And 32% maintained their resilience. So I counted that as a win also. And here's how the interventions break down. As the AmeriCorps members log what they're doing, they have to choose one of these activities. So we can see that a lot of academic support. And then enrichment activities, just like I said in the grant proposal. So those numbers line up pretty nicely there. And I have a really quick school-by-school review here. Again, important to note, clearly, AmeriCorps members served more than the total number of students presented there. And this one in particular. I really think this is a flaw of the AmeriCorps members properly logging their interventions. So along with my quantitative data, of course, there's qualitative data to go along with it, because the numbers can't tell the whole story. So I include some stories here to round out the sort of dryness of the numbers. A reflection on the AmeriCorps program. We have some pretty good successes over here. Member retention, member satisfaction. Go back for a sec, Chris. I've got supportive and responsive partners. Of course, we have Sitka to offer, so lots of people want to come and serve in Sitka. I think we offer a great experience. And then, of course, challenges are not specific to the program necessarily other than the consistency of my data collection and having the members enter it. But then the other challenges are things like, of course, COVID-19, housing costs of living, and just our geography. And then relocating people to Sitka. So I, as I said in the beginning, I'm always striving to get better data. This that I'm presenting to you was my first foray into electronic data. So that was a step forward for me. And then, are there questions for me? Nothing?
I was going to say, that's really interesting information to see, you know, the number of hours and students reached and stuff. So yeah, that is some good data there.
It is, yeah. And it'll be better next year. All right. Well, thank you for your time. Oh.
I was going to check something before I ask the dumb question. Just because I think it seems like it was on like an auto, an auto roll on that, or something. But just looking at the numbers, we had a link in our packet, and I just want to make, because I'd like to look at those numbers a little bit more. So I was just going to ask if you could send it to us. Or did you already? The PowerPoint. Okay, all right. Because I just, you know, I just would like to spend a little more time just the way that. I really appreciate you sharing with us. So, yeah, just like the school data numbers and like hours and like students reached, I would just like to see those. And thank you for the work that you do.
Can do.
Sarah?
Yeah.
So you listed housing as one of the challenges there. Is that something that you deal with? Do they deal with it individually? Is it something that the city or the municipality could help with some?
Yeah. You know, it's not technically part of the job description, but if you can't find housing, then you're not going to have any AmeriCorps members. So it, how I phrase it is, I liaise and help them find housing, but I don't place them in housing. But certainly.
So that's something that they're doing, say, if they're coming here for the school year or whatever their cycle is, they're trying to find housing, obviously, before they get here?
Yes. So I try to help them do that. Some of them stay at fine arts camp and then residential homes. Yeah.
Good to know. Thank you.
Yeah.
Really fast, just want to add, Sarah, would you mind if we took that PowerPoint and linked it on our packet agenda for the website?
No.
Okay. We can go and get that on there for you guys, so we have that. Thank you.
I just forwarded it to you to email it.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Okay.
That was really great information. So thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
All right. Does anyone need to take a break before we move on? Are we good? Okay. All right. We will take a five-minute recess. It is, which clock is right? 7:52. So let's just come back at eight. We'll make it eight minutes. At 7:59. We are on board member reports. And he's down there, Todd. We'll start with you. Can't see you.
So it's been a month now since the, our ASB retreat, not retreat, but the council that we did. And that fire hose of information is just now starting to trickle in. So I'm just really happy about that. Really, really enjoy it. Really got a lot out of it. Other than that, just keep it on. Keep on keeping on.
Thank you, Amy. I just want to thank Frank and all of the administrators of the schools. I was so thankful to be able to have a full, complete tour of all of the schools. You know, as a parent, you think that, you know, your schools. But the tour was just so in-depth and so informative. Above all, it was wonderful to see the kids in school. It was fun to see my children in school. And again, the tours were very informative for me. And then upcoming, I have the privilege, follow-up after the tours, to be asked to interview with some of the Pacific High students. So that is coming up, and I'm looking forward to that. And I also attended the meetings for the Sea Alaska Heritage Institute STEAM Planning Committee for their culturally responsive event that is coming up here in the next few weeks or next week. I think the dates have changed, so I can't say to which date it will happen. But it looks like it's going to be a great event for families within the district. And that's all I have. Thanks.
Yeah. Just a small recap. Yeah, the state conference, really enjoyed attending that with everyone. We certainly missed you, Amy. Not careful tripping you at all. Not careful tripping you at all. Um, and it was a very full conference, so being, uh, compared to last year, of course, uh, where things were all online, that felt like a slog. Um, and this one, the slog is not the right word. It felt like it took a lot of stamina to get through. And this one, uh, it, by the time we hit Saturday, Sunday, you're tired, uh, but it's, it's a good, full, uh, conference, so definitely thank you to AASB and to our district for supporting us and attending that. Um, Blossom and I sat in on a lot of, uh, professional boundaries discussions on the first day, which, uh, is a good conversation and, um, good to be thinking ahead on that. Uh, I also attended Teacher of the Year, Kelly Shrine from Chinook Elementary, uh, Teacher of the Year for Alaska, and, uh, she shared her reflections and lessons learned from COVID-19 and just the takeaways of how much our teachers, uh, and staff have really just had to be creative and work through very challenging circumstances while keeping the education of our students, obviously, is the priority for all that they do. And I thought a lot about our teachers here in, in this district and, um, just really grateful to be in this community and, and in this state, uh, and get to interact with all the other, uh, school board members who attended, getting to have some hot topic discussions with them, uh, picking their brains on different things, so, um, I could talk a lot about different things we did at the conference, but those are a couple of highlights. Um, also Frank and I got last minute invited to, um, Pacific High School Q1 Academic Achievers Meeting on November tenth, and, uh, we were both able to attend that, and, um, it was just really, I was in this room, and a big circle of all of Pacific High, uh, faculty and students, uh, getting to do some icebreakers with them and introductions, and just getting to know those students a little more, uh, and get to, get to interact with them was really wonderful. Uh, but that event highlighted student achievement academically, musically, athletically, uh, just all the, all the different ways of shining a spotlight on the good work that they're doing, so really glad I got to participate with that, um, and get to witness that. So, thank you to PHS and Mandy for the invite on that.
Yeah, it's hard to follow that up. Um, yeah, all those things, um, super action-packed as far as that goes. I think one of the things that, excuse me, that I brought home really clearly was how the communities across the state have been dealing with all the educational issues and not just educational issues, but, uh, you know, the support issues, family support issues, and sort of what a lot of folks spoke about tonight is, um, you know, the mental health and anxiety that's become, um, a lot more prevalent, obviously prevalent. Um, so it was nice to talk to other folks and about what's working and what's not working, um, where resources are and where they aren't. Um, so I think that was one of the big takeaways, that it was most pertinent above what everyone else was talking about here, so. Um, I did talk to the assembly last week, and I, I was lucky enough to hang out and listen to, um, Andrews, which is Sick of Kids, and, um, the, that's, if you go on Sick of Kids website, I think they have the whole presentation. I'm, I'm hoping Andrew comes back so that...
You're talking about Andrew Frisk?
Yeah, Andrew Frisky, oh, I'm so sorry, yes.
Got it.
Yeah, and, and that was really lined up with some of the conversations that we had with the assembly last year. Um, so I think it's pretty fortuitous that they've kind of rushed in and, and, uh, are really, uh, taking the, taking the ball and running with that, so I'm hoping that we'll be able to support them. Um, that's all I can think of, I'm sure I'll think of much more tomorrow, but thank you all for coming.
Um, yeah, I am really sad that I missed the AASB conference this year, but I was home cheering on some volleyball players, so, um, that was fun too, and they, they won and they went to state, so that was exciting. Um, guess a couple things I was gonna mention, um, I did find out today that I, I was asked to go to the high school in a couple of weeks for Ms. Richards' class, and I, I'm bad that I didn't ask for the name of her class was, but I, I guess you're going also Superintendent Hauser, and we're doing mock interviews, um, which I'm really excited about. I enjoy doing that kind of stuff a lot, so looking forward to that. Um, I am gonna be gone from January first to the ninth, so I'm gonna officially pass the gavel to Vice President Andrew while I'm gone, so just want to let everyone know that I will be completely, um, out of communication for nine days, take a break. Um, and I, I guess I just wanted to say too, you know, I, um, we've received a lot of emails in the last few days, obviously had a lot of people here tonight to testify, and, um, I think that, you know, the common thread is we all care about our kids, and that's the most important thing to remember, and while we may not all always agree on how we handle that and what the mitigations are and what our education looks like, what our curriculum looks like, you know, you could go into a whole lot of different things, but we all care about our kids, and I really want to focus on that and keep that, the, the common thread and the unity that we work forward, you know, knowing that we love our kids and we care about them and our community, and, um, someone said it tonight, it might have been you, I can't remember, but they, they are our future, um, and, and we all agree on that, and I just want to focus on what we do agree on and, um, as we move forward, so. Thank you to everybody who's taken the time to email us or come talk tonight, so. Um, that being said, we are moving on to the administrative reports, and I will pass that on to Superintendent Hauser.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, starting off, uh, we've got our budget update. Uh, we'll talk a little bit more later on in the agenda. The main focus, of course, is on the audit and, um, going through as far as the budget, that was the main thing. We were able to have the audit, um, review, uh, when we were at the AASB conference, um, and we'll be talking a little bit more about that later on today, but we'll go into more details, but as far as that goes, everything's looking good with the budget, and, uh, I wanted to see if there was any questions specifically on that, or if we can kind of move on to enrollment, because I have more good news to share about that. All right. Uh, student enrollment, we're actually picking up students, which is great, so we are now at one thousand one hundred and thirty-five students enroll in the Sitka school districts. We're excited to, um, uh, have those numbers continue to go up, so that's always a good thing. Uh, I think we, uh, reported on this last time, but we did finish the student count and we did come right at, um, what we projected, so that's a good thing, and, uh, those were all submitted to the state, so we are in good standing as far as our enrollment and making sure that they have all those numbers as well. Uh, moving on to my superintendent's update, unless there's any questions regarding the, um, uh, enrollment numbers, I'll go through, highlight a couple things.
Sarah is gonna ask really quick, the eleven thirty-three enrollment number is our official number though for the count for the...
That, that was the official number for the count, yeah. We've just picked up a couple more students since then, and we'll have students coming in and out of the district, you know, throughout the school year.
Right. Okay, thanks.
So this is my update, so I'll go through and highlight, um, some things going on. Uh, the first thing, of course, we started to have our spotlight on different schools, which I'm really enjoying, uh, putting together and working with the principals on. As Principal Demmer, uh, mentioned, uh, we kind of did a little bit of a tag team with, uh, highlights. So we're gonna highlight and spotlight on Keet Gushahin, uh, and, uh, really kind of talk about some of the excellent things, and I just wanted to thank him and his staff for putting together, uh, just some excellent slides that we're gonna share. So in collaboration with our librarian and science teacher, Keet Gushahin put on a school-wide Balloons Over Broadway Design Challenge. Uh, this challenge is based off the book Balloons Over Broadway, which is about the origin of the Macy's Thanksgiving Day Parade and about the man who created the balloons, Tony Sarge. Students created and filmed their own parade to show with school students and staff using a green screen. The engineering design challenge is that to get the balloons across, uh, to float above the ground using code and coding that directs an Ozobot, uh, to carry the balloon across the parade path. And so you can see, uh, here are some of the students, uh, created balloons that were inspired by the Balloons Over Broadway in their virtual parade, and you can see the background and all the different designs that they have. I just thought that was such a cool group of pictures. And of course, if you look, especially that first one in the upper left, you see the little Ozobot kind of going through and carrying the balloons across. Keet Gushahin staff are also engaging in comprehensive work towards boosting student social emotional health this school year. In addition to collaborating kindness, celebrating kindness, uh, throughout the day, staff are creating a school-wide positive community. Each week, a student is chosen to write and read a message about a theme for the week, such as compassion, that the entire school will practice. The message is filmed and broadcast to the entire student body every Friday. In addition, our teachers are delivering Second Step Social Skills lessons to their students using a class meeting format every week. Our school counselor, um, delivers monthly Second Step lessons to participate in classrooms with occasional puppet guest appearances. I have to make sure that I go check out one of those puppet guest appearances. Keet Gushahin, uh, students also participated in a virtual art activity for the second year in a row. Students created a form-lined turkey guided by, uh, clinkit artist Mark Sixby. So there's some examples of the, uh, form-lined turkeys right there. Uh, here's some other work, uh, and some proud and joyous faces too, with some of the form-lined turkey designs. I gotta say, there's some nice big smiles there too, so it's always good to see, so. In addition, third through fifth grade girls at Keet Gushahin have been participating in Girls on the Run this fall. Girls on the Run is an after-school program where girls get to explore valuable lessons such as practicing empathy, being inclusive, and standing up for themselves and others. They practice these skills while having fun and playing with a team and training for a 5K race that is taking place on Saturday, December eleventh. Girls on the Run is supported in conjunction with Sitkins Against Family Violence Youth Program, Youth Advocates of Sitka, STA, and Sitka Counseling. Keet Gushahin, uh, is, uh, continuing to offer a quality opportunity for fifth graders to play in the band. Choir is another activity offered to fourth grade students as well. Students are busy preparing for upcoming mini concerts this month. Uh, we're really excited to be able to welcome families into our schools to watch their students perform, and this is the first time in about a year and a half that we've been able to have this, families come in, and we're really excited to have that. You can see the, uh, times up there, but in addition, the, the information will be going out to families as well about some of the mini concerts. Keet Gushahin also has concerts planned for this spring for all grades, second through fifth, as well as our fifth grade band, so again, more information and more opportunities to see our students perform. We're really excited about that. Uh, Principal Demmer mentioned this, that as part of a unit about storytelling in various genres, students in fourth and fifth grade had the pleasure of listening to AmeriCorps volunteer Jonathan Pjar tell spooky stories, as well as listen to a podcast that he and his sister produced, especially for the school. They set up a makeshift campfire, and around that fire, JP enthralled classes with his expert storytelling abilities that gave them goosebumps. Students learned about the qualities of urban legends and myths, podcasts, and the craft of storytelling. Classes are usually, using storytelling techniques like JP used to tell their own stories and are in the beginning stages of making podcasts themselves. And finally, uh, Principal Demmer mentioned this too, but, uh, the district offices are at Keet, and I oftentimes get a chance to go out and see the students having fun during recess, and I just wanted to highlight some of the pictures too, and the snowmen that they put together. And lastly, I just wanted to thank Principal Demmer and his team again for putting together such an amazing grouping of slides for us, uh, and for the excellent work that is happening at Keet Gushahin, so thank you so much. We're now going to, uh, turn to older students. Um, I'd like to thank again Garland Kennedy, James Polton, and the Sitka Sentinel for reporting on and capturing our high school student, uh, successes. Um, our Sitka High School volleyball team, as we said, were region five champions and finished sixth at state. Chloe Morrison was selected for the all-state team. Four Sitka High School swimmers qualified for state, Emma Gassman, Brandon Stevenson, Matt Rice, and Razee Gullery. Uh, they were, uh, all competed alongside Olympians, which I heard was pretty exciting to be in the pool with an Olympian, gold medalist. Uh, Emma Gassman pictured here, uh, placed fourth in the Hunter Lloyd Backstroke, and we were able to recognize her today, so we're excited about that. Uh, we also have Jason Young here, team captain representing wrestling. Wrestling will be concluded with regions in Wrangle next week and state the following weekend. We had eight students from Sitka who were selected for the all-state music festival, and we were able to recognize some of those students again tonight for top honors, who went to Tyler Address, First Share Alto Saxophone, and Dylan Dumag for First Share Bass Choir. DDF had a very strong showing at the Gino meet earlier in the month and is heading to Ketchikan next week. And finally, basketball and cheer are starting up, so we're excited about that happening too. As was mentioned, I led a tour of schools, uh, of our schools for school board and assembly members recently, and all of our schools gave a very warm wel, welcome. Uh, I have to say, it was Wacky Wednesday at Blatchley, so that was really fun to see. Uh, you can see one of the pictures there with the students dressed up, as well as, um, uh, Mr. White, uh, wearing, uh, very colorful, uh, high socks, shorts, and a wonderful pink tie, so I have to say it was quite the ensemble, I was, uh, great to see. Uh, the assembly members on the tour mentioned our amazing wood, metal, and auto shop facilities at their recent meeting, so I really just wanted to highlight that we are really proud of our career technical education, or CTE programs in SSD, and all of our offerings for students. I was recently in Anchorage for a conference with superintendents and school boards from around the state. Every district was asked to bring something for the silent auction. I brought a few wooden cribbage boards that our students had designed and fabricated. The cribbage boards were top earners at the auction that they had. Uh, in fact, one of the conference organizers came up to me afterward and asked if next year I could bring many more because they were such a hit, so I just really wanted to, uh, let them know, uh, that they really spoke highly of the excellent work, uh, our students are doing in SSD. I also wanted to celebrate and highlight some of the work that's taking on, uh, around STEM opportunities in SSD. Uh, in case you don't know, STEM stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, and Mathematics. This image is from a recent article in the Pacific Northwest National Laboratory Newsletter. It highlighted the work of Dr. Molly Greer, an ocean engineer at the lab, and Ms. Wolsey's Blatchley Summer Science Camp, uh, where students, uh, or her summer, uh, science camp students who designed their own energy wave converters with assistance from Dr. Greer. Dr. Greer said that our students were quote-unquote practically fun, or particularly fun to work with, and that she and Ms. Wolsey are collaborating on future hands-on STEM projects related to wind energy, so it's great to be able to celebrate and have that in our schools. Uh, we're still working, uh, on our strategic plans, so an update regarding the SSD strategic plans. Um, uh, planning teams comprised of parents, staff, and community members have been meeting since September every week, um, with each team working on plans for one of the above strategies. Uh, a number of the teams have finished their action plans, uh, we're compiling them now. The original strategic planning team will reconvene in January to hear all the action plans and decide which plans to adopt. The goal is to have the final action plans ready for implementation starting in February. And, uh, as usual, just wanted to update, there has been some, uh, developments with our COVID-19, uh, updates, and just wanted to go through and, uh, talk about our COVID-19 updates. Um, we currently have zero COVID-19 cases associated with our buildings, and again, you can find this information on our main website. In addition, uh, here's our current alert level for Sitka. We are currently in high, but you can see a striking difference from where we were, uh, where we are now and where we were back in July and August. I have been saying from the start that masks aren't forever, since the start of this school year. On Monday, Sitka School District set a goal of transitioning to mask optional in mid-January. That's about two months away, but only a few weeks for school, with winter break and in-service days factor, factored in. There are three important points about this, uh, mask optional goal. Uh, they're listed here, and we're gonna go through each point in detail. First, transitioning to mask optional in mid-July is a goal and not a deadline. We're looking ahead, after all, in our schools have had the opportunity to be vaccinated, and setting a goal for the future. I'm very optimistic we'll meet this goal because of the alert level changes likely from the state, and we'll talk a little bit more on that later, our generally declining cases and availability of vaccines for all who want them and our vaccine coverage. Sitka is a much different place than many other communities right now, so I'm optimistic about the future and our ability to meet this goal.
Frank, you meant January, not December, right?
Oh, I meant January, yes, sorry about that. January, mid-January, not mid-July, let me repeat that. We are looking and hoping to, and optimistic for a mask optional mid-January. Thank you very much for clarifying that. Uh, the second important piece is that our mitigation plan is still in place. You'll recognize this, this is our quick summary mitigation chart that we've had since September one. We heard at the recent assembly meeting that the state is likely changing the calculation behind the alert levels, which are circled here. The mayor shared that Dr. Zink's team said this change might come in the late December, early January timeframe, so that's helped us set our mid-January goal in SSD. The state's likely plan is to move away from case-driven alert levels, so it won't just be numbers of positive cases driving the alert levels, but also things like hospitalizations. If current trends continue, this would likely result in a favorable alert level change in Sitka and move us into those lower levels. If, when we reach January, the situation in Sitka is different than expected, if hospitalizations are on the rise with a new variant, for example, or if we're still in high, we will revise our mask optional timeline at that point. So we're setting a goal, but also recognizing that the situation we're in is fluid, and we're going to continue to monitor it. In addition to the anticipated changes to the alert level, the vaccine availability for all in SSD now and Sitka's vaccine coverage also support our mid-January goal. This is the State of Alaska Sleeves Up For School Vaccination Dashboard. This is the State of Alaska Sleeves Up for School Vaccination Dashboard. I've mentioned this in my emails. This is publicly available, and you can find it by Googling Sleeves Up for School in Alaska. Again, this is data from the state website. You can select for different boroughs or census areas off to the side. That's what I did here for Sitka. So the data in the center that's circled is 91.3% one-plus dose and 85.8% fully vaccinated. This is the percentage of vaccinated Sitkin residents ages 12 to 18. Off to the side, you can see that data for other boroughs and census areas. Alution East right now is really high with 86.3% of the residents 12 through 18 fully vaccinated. Sitka used to be at the highest in the state, but we kind of got knocked out a little bit from the top spot by less than a percent. As you look through the different regions, you'll see that these percentages of vaccinated residents of this age group in Sitka are remarkably high. Just as a comparison, Anchorage is only at 52% in comparison. Fairbanks North Star is about 42%, and Matsu, where I went to school, is only at 28% vaccinated for this age group. So really, this high vaccination coverage in Sitka is another reason why we're setting a goal of transitioning to mask optional and why I'm optimistic about that mid-January goal. We are now reaching the third of our important points. We're setting a goal for mask optional shortly after we return from winter break, but masks are required right now. We are still in high, the alert levels haven't changed yet. Masks are required by city ordinance at this alert level. And there's another really important reason why masks are critical for these next two months. Here's Sitka again, but this is the vaccinations as for residents ages 5 to 11. Vaccinations for this group, for this age group, only started a couple of weeks ago. The green lines circled at the bottom show when vaccinations started here, the second week in November. We have search offering clinics on Tuesdays and Harry Race on Fridays. As of yesterday, approximately a quarter of Sitka's residents ages 5 to 11 had had their first dose of the vaccine. No one was fully vaccinated in this age group yet because there hasn't been time for them to receive their second dose. It's three weeks between the first and second doses. So we have a situation where a quarter of Sitkins population of 5 to 11-year-olds is partially vaccinated and waiting for the second dose of the vaccine. We don't want to make masks optional now before they have had that opportunity to receive that second dose. So that last slide was data from yesterday, and here's the same slide, state report for today, December 1. Again, this is for 5 to 11-year-old residents in Sitka. We see here that the percentage of vaccinated 5 to 11-year-olds in Sitka has gone up two points in just the last 24 hours. And parents continue to vaccinate children of this age group. And today, a few of this age group, 14%, have met that three-week timeline and received their second shot. These children won't have full intended protection for another two weeks. Parents of this age group are vaccinating their students right now, we can see these numbers going up. We don't want to make masks optional now before they have had the opportunity to do so or receive those second doses. So really, setting a goal for the future, again, mid-January, ensures everyone who chooses to has the opportunity to be fully vaccinated, or if over 18, to receive their booster before we make any transition to mask optional. Setting this timeline now ensures everyone has the opportunity to take, talk to their doctors or schedule that first or second dose or booster if they choose to before we make that transition. We've been talking about parents who choose to vaccinate here. I've said it many times before that a COVID-19 vaccination is not required in SSD. I just wanted to make sure that I repeated that one more time. Finally, state doctors shared that the CDC guidance we're expecting this month has to do with rapid antigen testing to reduce or eliminate quarantines. Rapid antigen tests have also been in the news recently with more and more school districts now offering them. We're actually way ahead in Sitka because we've been offering rapid antigen testing since the start of the school year in SSD. Our rapid testing program has supported our successful reopening this year, helping to keep COVID-19 out of our schools and our students in school by reducing lengthy or unnecessary quarantines. Testing is one way we can all work towards our mid-January goal and keep COVID out of our schools. This is a quick and easy process with results in 15 minutes. In a piece of good news over the weekend, the manufacturers of our rapid antigen test, Abbott, quote, "have already conducted an assessment of the Omicron variant and are confident their rapid test can detect that virus." You can find the testing consent form on our website. As the form states, "We only test with parent consent." Parents choose whether we test or not. Parents or guardians have to fill out and sign this form before we test students. And now, just a couple of announcements. Winter break starts on December 18th. The district offices will be closed over the holidays, and students' first day back is January 6. That concludes my report, are there any questions?
Doesn't look like there's any questions, huh?
No.
Sorry, I can't see a screen that close to me, so. All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
A lot of information, a lot of good information. It moves us on to item 13, New Business, and the first item is Acceptance of the Audit. This is, oh wait, no, we do need a motion for this, sorry. We can get a motion for that.
I move to accept the audit as presented.
It has been moved and seconded to accept the audit as presented. Is there any public comment to the motion? Any board comment? Do you want to, oh, Don, did you want to speak?
Roll call.
Oh. Oh, I just wanted to comment that we were given the report in Anchorage, and there was, it was, they were given a very clear bill, and I just wanted to personally say thank you to the finance office for all the hard work with that. We know it's a, it's a really big task, so our hats are off, thank you very much.
Yeah, and I will just elaborate on that too. So we did meet with the auditor, I met with them virtually since I wasn't in Anchorage, but this is what we do every year, we meet with the auditors annually, and they go over the results. It's a big, huge, fat document, and the, for as long as I've been on the board, there's never been any findings, which, like you said, is a huge, huge compliment to our district office staff, and especially with having the transition of our staff this year. Don Gluth has done an amazing job, so. Yeah, so this has already been reviewed by the board, just like Paul said, just to clarify that, so. Any other comments or questions about this? No, all right, I think we can go ahead and, so the motion on the table is to accept the audit as presented.
Blossom Teal Olson? Yes. Todd Gebler?
Yes.
Paul Ryu?
Yes.
Andrew Hanes?
Yes.
Amy Morrison?
Yes.
Motion passed.
All right, thank you. The next item is Discussion of Formalizing School Board Goals, and this one is just a discussion, so there's no motion. Frank, did you want to speak to this one?
I guess briefly, so as we went back and looked at the goals and objectives, one of the things that came out of the strategic planning process was the group of parents, teachers, community members, students, set four goals that they believed through the strategic planning process that they really wanted to have in set for this at school district. The goals, would you like me to read through the goals as we go through? That way, we can make sure that they're on the record. So the goals were 100% of Sitka School District students will have at least one year of measurable growth every school year. The second goal was 100% of our students will graduate. Third goal was 100% of all middle and high school students will have a post-graduation plan. And the final fourth goal was 100% of students will have access to mental health supports. Those were the four overlining goals that were discussed and put forward and adopted in our strategic planning process that took place at the end of March and the beginning of April.
So we just wanted to throw this on the agenda, to have the discussion and just, like it says, formalize these and see if anyone has any questions, concerns, things they want to add, remove, you know. You did come out of the strategic planning process, I'd be hesitant to want to do anything to them, but does anyone have any questions or comments?
I guess just for clarification, so if we, let's just say we move these four goals forward, so then what happens then with the action teams? When do we hear back? How is that going, what's it going to look like?
Great question. So the action teams, when they present and move forward with their, over the last three months, they've been meeting and developing the action plans to support the strategies that are ultimately going towards meeting our goals. And these are those goals that were outlined in the strategic planning meeting. And so what will happen as they go through, when we bring all the action plan teams together and all the action plans to support those strategies, we'll have that discussion in January, identify which ones, looking at cost analysis, looking at, you know, what goals are going to ultimately meet, or I'm sorry, what action plans are going to meet and help us reach these goals. Those are adopted, and starting in February, we will start focusing on and implementing the action plans that were identified as and adopted by the strategic planning team, and start focusing on, and each of those action plans should directly relate to a strategy that will support the successful accomplishment and reaching of these goals.
My only question, other question is, so what percentage, what does the staff representation on the action teams look like?
There's actually a really good representation of staff on the action teams. I've got to go through and think, I think every single team has, except for one team, has a staff member that is represented on it. And I, of course, have been going through and, you know, kind of tracking and monitoring some of the progress as well as we're going through and having those conversations and answering questions about the action plans that they're developing.
I have a question. One of the goals being 100% of our students will graduate. What is our current graduation rate at this time?
That is, I want to say right now, I'm trying to go back to the memory, last year, I believe the graduation rate was about 98%.
And that's including both Sitka High School and Pacific High?
Yes.
Well, I'll add that these numbers came during a very impassioned moment during the strategic planning process, where we were looking at 90%, 95%, and we had some, I don't want to, I won't call anyone out by name, but some people in the room that had had, you know, military background or dangerous jobs, and they say that, you know, when we prepare to do a job, we say, okay, 100%, and we're coming back from this, we are going to do this, we are going to complete these objectives. And so it was really an impassioned, why are we settling for less than 100%? And, you know, so that's just to give them, I guess, if it's needed, context to where those numbers came from, because it's very, it's very, what's the word? Aspirational, but shouldn't we be when we are, when we are doing strategic planning? So looking at where we are and patting ourselves on the back for a great graduation rate, but let's stretch for even more.
Any other comments? All right.
Yeah, I guess I would just comment, I really appreciate the fact that the, and especially the way that it's worded, having every student have a post-graduation plan. And, you know, I like the way that that's worded because it's definitely focusing on all the different options, whether it's, you know, moving into the workforce or, you know, different types of training or secondary school. I really appreciated that, that it was handled that way, the way that the approach was, so. My hats off to that one.
No, thanks. One of the things I want to highlight is the focus really is starting that process in 6th grade too at Blatchy, when students come in, starting to have that conversation. It's actually part of our work plan with the StepScrime as well, trying to make sure that we have students have that work plan and looking at pretty much 6th grade having that post-secondary plan, so we're excited to have that in there as well. So thank you for commenting on that.
Well, thank you for all of this, it's really exciting. It's been, when, April, late April, I think, has been the first kind of started, the strategic?
It was, yeah, it was the end of March, I think it was March 30th and the first, April 1st, and then the Saturday, so if I'm remembering, because I remember, it was a great trip, it was beautiful. I was watching the bubble feeding for the whales and the herring outside, it was just like pretty magical, so, yeah.
Yeah, it's just been a really great process, watching it grow and develop and, you know, getting these goals and getting the action plans and everything out of it. So thank you for all the, all the hard work you're putting into this. And I, I guess, it sounds like there's no dissension to formalizing these as our school board goals. Yes, okay, all right, thank you. Moving on to item C, the Board Book Presentation. I didn't, because it wasn't a motion. Is there any public comment to the school board goals? Sorry, I guess I should ask for public comments. Nope, thank you. All right, Board Book Presentation, and I will, well, let's go ahead and get a motion, and then I'll let Mr. Hauser explain it, and then we will allow for public comment. So if we can get a motion.
I move to approve the MOU for purchase of a board book.
I'll second that.
All right, it has been moved and seconded to approve the MOU for purchase of board book. And like I said, I will let Superintendent Hauser explain this, then we'll allow for some public comment, and then some board questions.
Sounds good, we've got, it's actually a really quick presentation, it's really just to highlight some key things. But we just wanted to go through and kind of highlight, Board Book is a paperless board meeting preparation software. A couple of key features of Board Book is it has and provides instant access to meeting information. It's secure, cloud-based document management. It's customizable with templates. It has easy control access and document permissions, and it really is focused on simplifying creating and editing packets. So some of the advantages for school boards. It does provide access to board packets from anywhere, on or offline. Notes and comments to saved packets, improves collaboration, enhances communication, and just really try to put and package everything together essentially online. And so we thought that as we are continuing to pursue updating the website, we're also looking at ways of updating how we do our business with board packets as well. We thought this would be a good option for that.
Is there any public comment to the motion?
Good evening, my name is Mike Vera, currently the president of the Sitka Education Association. There's more a question, so I don't know if you can answer or not, but I'm assuming this is all covered because it's AASB that's doing this, but just my question is, how would this relate to Open Meetings Act? With collaboration that's going on online between board members, how would the public be able to have access to that kind of communication in a way that is in accordance with public meeting laws?
It would still, all the public meeting laws are in place. This really, I think, is a goal, is to make sure that some of the materials and the resources that are presented and the board packets are actually more accessible. And so that's really the goal, as far as Open Meetings Act and all of the requirements that are set forth by that, that would still be in effect.
And my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, because you got the presentation and I didn't, I sat through it a couple of years ago though, is that there's no communication between board members with this. It's just where the data is stored, essentially. So when you reference, like, you can take notes and stuff, it's not like we can see each other's notes, correct? It'd be each individual board member seeing their own notes from meetings, I believe?
Yes, that's my understanding of the Board Docs program as well.
Are there any other public comments? So any questions from the board on this, or comments or?
So this would take the place of like all of the board packets and minutes and whatnot that we currently publish on the website, it would just, it would automatically link to that, so that when the public wanted it, so whatever time Don is spending uploading that and all that, now would be saved, right?
That's the goal, yeah. It should not, it should hopefully enhance the opportunities for access to the materials and the resources that we have in our packets, and also have them all online as well. In that way, like I said, we're in the process of trying to update our website. Right now, everything is linked through PDFs, and this hopefully will be all web-based and more accessible.
Well, I know one thing I've noticed is it's, from what I can tell, like, Don, you have to change things in different areas, and yeah, so it seems like it's just a very counterproductive method that we're using right now, so. One question I have is, will they provide training to us, or is it minimal? Is it pretty simple and easy to? simple and easy to figure out, or how do we do that if we sign up for this?
You know, I didn't actually ask that question, and looking at that, I know that there are video resources online. I believe that, and I'm actually going to turn to Dawn on this too, because she was also looking into it. Do you want to just comment on some of that? But I do believe there's resources for training as well with that.
Yes, there's, there's training for me as a primary user, and then I would assist anybody in whatever they need to accomplish through the Board Book.
Any other, sorry, I can't hardly see a top from here. Any other questions or comments down there? All right, so.
It does say, there's actually a spot on there that says tech support too. Supplier will provide subscriber with online and telephone-based tech support.
Okay, thank you. All right. Do you have a comment, question?
So, is this a new program? Are there testimonials from other districts that you've, that you got from, that while this changed, this really simplified, this made things so much better?
There are a number of districts across the state that utilize the service, and it was one that, you know, was recommended by AASB as far as being a good way of managing and tracking and keeping on board documents, just more accessible and online, in the cloud.
Okay, because that's what I'm thinking, because at first it's like, oh, well, they'll be online, and just thinking that our packets are already online. But if it's going to make that process, and especially with a new website, I think the time is really well, I think it's a good opportunity to integrate new, superior programming that can benefit that website as well, and access of information to the public and board members.
And that does actually align with our strategic planning, and one of the action plans is focusing on communication and increasing communication.
And I'll just add, I went to, you know, at AASB when they do the roundtables, and I went to a roundtable presentation on this a couple of years ago, and we were actually starting to look into it, and it looked really compelling when I sat, it was Lon Garrison that did it. And I feel like, I don't remember exactly, but I feel like he said, like, 45 out of the 53 school districts in Alaska were using it and loved it. And we were just starting to look into it, and then this thing called COVID happened, and it kind of fell to the wayside, so it never got explored again. So, yeah, just if that helps. I know it's used by most school districts in Alaska. All right, any other comments or questions? All right, so the motion on the table is to approve the MOU for purchase of Board Book. If we can do a roll call though. Todd Gebler?
Yes.
Blossom Teal Olsen?
Yes.
Andrew Hanes?
Yes.
Paul Rieu?
Yes.
Amy Morrison?
Yes.
Motion passed. All right, thank you. And next item is item 13D, the AASB Policy Online Service. If we can get a motion for this?
I move to approve the MOU for purchase of Policy Online Services.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the MOU for purchase of Policy Online Services. And again, I will let Superintendent Hauser speak to this, and then I'll see if there's any public comment.
Again, I have a brief PowerPoint, I love my PowerPoints. But again, this is, and goes along with the Board Books conversation, as well as, you know, just trying to modernize our online presence when it comes to making things available for school board. And one of the things that we're looking at is a service that's provided by AASB, a policy service, which we already subscribe to, the AASB Policy Service, as far as the policy updates, but this is their Policy Online. And the Policy Online really provides publication and support for district's policy manual. It's linked to the district's website. It provides easily accessible, it's easily accessible by administration, staff, and the public. And the thing that I think is probably the most important piece is it is easily searchable. And so, you know, it really, as we go through, it will maintain a sequential revision history, provides access to policies from all other districts using the AASB Policy Online Tool, provides access to AASB's model policy manual, and district policy manual updated with AASB's annual policy updates, and AASB assists with the custom policy updates. And so, this Policy Online Service provides all of these features. And just because of internet connectivity is always, you know, kind of up in the air, and we wanted to just kind of show an example of how this would work. So, Cordova City School District currently uses this service, the Policy Online Service, and as you can see in the example, off to the left, you have the school district and the policies that are in there. That is the policies section. You can select on a policy section and go through and search by policy number or keyword. You can look at recent policy modifications. All of these things are available for us to review and look at, which is a great feature. And also, as you go through and you provide that search, as you can see up in the upper left-hand corner, somebody typed in garden, went through and looked, and it highlighted all the areas where gardens reference, goes down to Board Policy 6163.4, school gardens and greenhouses, and you can see where it highlights all the areas and where gardens is referenced in all the board policies and administrative regulations and examples. And so, that searchable feature is something that right now, we actually are struggling with. We don't really have access, because all of our policies are PDFs, they're uploaded as PDFs. And while they're all available and accessible online, we keep them up to date, monitored and tracked with kind of the revisions, which is referenced on the lower right-hand corner of our policies. Being able to go on and search through and see all the references is an extremely powerful tool, as well as being able to go through and look at revisions over the years, as well as look at model policy examples that are available through the AASB Policy Online Tool.
Thank you. Is there any public comment to the motion? Great, how about board comments, questions?
So, does it automatic, are the ARs available on there too? Do they get linked?
Yeah, everything will be linked, all the ARs. Everything that we currently have on our website will all be digitized, made as essentially webpages, searchable and available. And so, they'll all be put together, and AASB is part of this, will help us with that transition too, to get everything loaded in. So, there'll be all of our board policies, all of our administrative regulations, our examples, everything that we have currently right now will be available and searchable.
Does this change the process at all, or streamline it for updating policies that are recommended by AASB as of right now? I mean, obviously, the approval process would still be the same with the board, but is it just an organizational database, or does it somehow streamline recommendations from AASB?
It has the ability, one of the nice features, one, of course, searchability, which is right now probably one of the key features I think everyone would benefit from. But it does, I think, streamline, as we kind of go through and look at it, it does have and provide that electronic means for when AASB does provide their model language, you know, every year they have a review and they make recommendations for model language boards and review them and see if there's any changes as laws change, and looking at that policy. It will automatically have and show those policy updates, being able to reference those, and that transition to make those policies, as well as tracking revision histories are more easily available as well. And so, all that will be online. Right now, and we'll probably continue to still have this, but we have a pretty extensive collection of board policies throughout the years, and bundles that show and track the revisions through the years, and this will help us keep all of that and monitor that all online, and being able to go back and review the changes that happened, when they happened, as well as if there's questions as a board, when we want to go through and look at, and say, we're in the process of looking at the graduation regalia and developing the board policy for the Sika School District around graduation regalia. This program, the Policy Online, you could go in and look, and it will reference all the different districts that are part of this tool, part of this group. It will, you can look and say, hey, what is some other district's policies around graduation regalia? And that really can speak to all different policy questions. And then you can pull up other districts that subscribe to this and see different examples that are used across the state for other districts that are part of this program, which is a pretty useful tool as we're going through and looking and trying to reference what has been discussed across the state as well.
All right, thanks for that. I think revision history and searchability, obviously. Right now, it's hunt and peck, correct?
Yeah, we're on a good day, yes.
Relates to this topic, and then you just got to start going through them. So, that would be a real game changer for people who want to look through, and we get asked questions all the time, what's your policy on this? So, I, yeah, that's exciting.
So, not to take tire-kicking to the next level, but would we be able to search by revision date? I mean, can we, is there a way to get on there and be like, what are all our oldest policies, you know, in order, does that make any sense?
I think, if I'm understanding the question, I don't know. I mean, I don't know why you would not be able to search through and see all the revision history, but I've never actually gone through and looked to see if I can go and say, okay, I want to see what this, you can find the policy, do a search for, when you do searches, you're really looking at that policy. I don't know if there's another, you know, as a board member getting access to past revisions, being able to look and search through the last 20, 40, 60 years if they've been updated, obviously. Some of those board policies wouldn't be in there, because they probably haven't been digitized, but I don't know if you'd be able to, I'd have to look in that and ask that question to see if we could go through and look at and search for revision histories. But being able to look and search for, like, this was revised in 1995, if our board policy has that revision date on it, when it's digital, when it's moved from a PDF to a Word document or a text-based document that's searchable, if that was on that policy, then you would be able to go back and do a search, it would find that revision history, because all of that, it's text-based searchable, because it's on the policy, it should be in there and should be discoverable.
I think the search feature is like the thing I'm most excited about, because Andrew's right, whenever you're looking for something, you literally have to open every single policy and try and find that, so. Any other questions or comments? All right, so the motion on the table is to approve the MOU for purchase of Policy Online Services. If we can do a roll call vote, please. Paul Rieu?
Yes.
Andrew Hanes?
Yes.
Blossom Teal Olsen?
Yes.
Todd Gebler?
Yes.
Amy Morrison?
Yes.
Motion passed. All right, thank you. And we did not have any correspondence and information tonight for item 14, so that moves us on to item 15 for executive session, if I can get a motion for that, please.
I move to go into executive session in accordance with and under the provision of AS44.62.310C24, the immediate knowledge of which would clearly have an adverse effect upon the finances of the district and also subjects that tend to prejudice the reputation and character of any person, provided the person may request a public discussion. The matter to be discussed is Sika Education Association negotiations. Mr. Hauser is invited.
It's been moved and seconded to go into executive session in accordance with and under the provision of AS44.62.310C24, the immediate knowledge of which would clearly have an adverse effect upon the finances of the district and also subjects that tend to prejudice the reputation and character of any person, provided the person may request a public discussion. The matter to be discussed is Sika Education Association negotiations. Mr. Hauser is invited. Is there any public comment to the motion?
Good evening again, Mike Vera, currently serving as the President of the Sika Education Association. I just want to kind of repeat what I said last month, that I sit outside the negotiation process as the President, so that I can be available to answer any questions or clarify anything for you if you want. So, I just want to make myself available to you. If you ever have a clarifying question, I can do that in a non-negotiating process, just to answer and clarify. I do want to just say that we have had great meetings so far, we're having a good process. We appreciate the cooperation with the district, and we're encouraged to keep going with the process, so, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment to the motion?
Amy, may I, just for clarification, would you read the motion again? Because as we look through, we look at the agenda, the motion, I believe, is speaking specifically to just negotiations, but there were two things on there, so I just wanted to make sure that we're, there might have been, the motion might not be exactly right, I just wanted to draw attention to that.
Yeah, no, thank you for doing that. I was looking at that myself, because it does, we do have two items that we were going to discuss in executive session, and it kind of says like the finances of the district and also subjects that tend to prejudice and reputa, prejudice the reputation and character of any person, which I think is the two issues, or the two things that allow us to go in executive session. But you're right, because it says the matter to be discussed is Sika Education Association, and there was another item we were discussing. So, we might need to have an amendment to the motion?
Or did you write it purpose?
I did not do that.
I feel, no, the motion maker.
Oh.
No, it's what's written in the thing. I think that. I move to amend, I move to amend the motion, is it okay with you? To read, I move to go into executive session in accordance with and under the provision of AS44.62.310C24, the immediate knowledge of which would clearly have an adverse effect upon the finances of the district and also subjects that tend to prejudice the reputation and character of any person, provided the person may request a public discussion. The matters to be discussed is Sika Education Association negotiations and a superintendent quarterly check-in with the school board. Mr. Hauser is invited.
Second. So, the amendment to the motion is to add the word at the very end, the matters to be discussed are Sika Education Association negotiations and superintendent quarterly check-in with the school board. Is there any public comment to the amendment to the motion? Any board comment to the amendment to the motion? All right, we can just do a, you don't need to do a roll call, but on this.
Wait, I actually do want to comment on that.
Okay.
So, I think one of the, one of the things that's even more confusing here is that on the, on the agenda, the word superintendent evaluation quarterly check-in is used. I don't, maybe it doesn't matter.
My agenda does not say evaluation, is that the?
The, up there the agenda reads, under number 15, executive session to discuss superintendent evaluation quarterly check-in and contract negotiations. And.
It's on the agenda.
Yeah. Do we need to vote on that amendment first? And then change it?
Yes.
Or can I strike my amendment?
Yes, because we haven't voted on it yet.
I would like to strike my amendment from the record. I move to add the language to Ms. Teal Olsen's motion. The last sentence should state, the matter to be discussed is Sika Education Association negotiations and superintendent evaluation quarterly check-in with the school board.
Second.
All right, so it has been moved and seconded to amend the motion to the last sentence to say the matters to be discussed are Sika Education Association negotiations and superintendent quarterly check-in with the school board. Is there any public comment to the amendment to the motion? Did I not say that right? What time is it? Okay, sorry, I will say that again. The amendment to the motion is been moved and seconded to amend the motion to the matters to be discussed are Sika Education Association negotiations and superintendent evaluation quarterly check-in with the school board. Is there any public comment to the amendment to the motion? Any board comment to the amendment to the motion?
Robert Schroel is really proud, right? We're doing good job.
Any of you kids in government class be watching. All right, so, is there any opposition to the amendment to the motion? Okay, seeing none, the amendment. Okay, seeing none, the amendment to the motion passes. So now we are back to the original motion, which has been amended. Is there any public comment to that motion? Any board comment? Is there any objection to the motion? Okay, motion passes, and we are going into executive session at 9:02 PM.